It's ten minutes after ten and we have Mrs. Chick, Ms. Goldberg, Ms. Mr. Kowski, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Savonich, Mrs. Walters. We have seven members present, we need three for a quorum. Uh, Carl, the council will come to order, please.
Eric Glanter, Goldberg Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Kowski, Pacheco, Ridley Thomas, Four Inch Wax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, the council will please come to order. This is a meeting of the City Council for the City of Los Angeles on the 28th day of March, the year 2000. There are 15 council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel 35 and we're also being monitored by council phone. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Ms. Mr. Kowski moves, Mr. Pacheco seconds, there's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
There's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Mr. President, items number one through six, a request that these be continued until April 25th.
Is there any objections to that? One through six? Seeing none, that will be the order. Next item.
Item number 37 on the regular agenda, it's request that this matter be continued until April 18th.
There's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Item number seven is, a motion is required, A is the appointment of Lydia Kennard as Executive Director of World Airports, and B is the salary recommendations to the EERC.
All right, Mr. Mr. Savonich moves, Ms. Kennard, would you? The committee met this morning to approve the permanent appointment of Lydia Kennard. Mrs. Chick, are you on the committee?
No, it wasn't.
Oh, you just want to show your support for women?
No, actually, although that's there very strongly and particularly for this person, Ms. Kennard, I'm thrilled that she has received the appointment. But I wanted to use the moment, since you're not always over here visiting us, to ask if you could just tell us briefly the situation with the Department of, with Lawa, Los Angeles World Airports, not accepting or not applying for and taking federal grant dollars. And I only know of it through what I read in the newspaper and would appreciate if you could just briefly explain that to us.
Certainly, there is a pot of money that comes from the FAA called AIP grants, is therefore capital improvement programs. Attached to our acceptance of that money is a grant assurance which would require us not to be able to take money, our non-aviation revenue, for purposes off airport. So, as a policy matter, we have not been accepting the AIP funds in hopes that our non-aviation revenues could be used for purposes off airport. At this point, however, we have been precluded from from either taking the AIP grants or from using our non-aviation money for off-airport purposes.
So there, so we can't do either. We're not getting the federal dollars and we're not having the funds coming into the city's general fund.
Yes.
How long could that kind of situation continue?
Well, the net loss to the airport has not been significant, however, with the passage of the new bill in Congress that attaches our ability to collect the ticket tax, which is the PFC funding, the passenger facility charges, and linking that to the AIP funding, now the, looking forward, the net loss to the airport could be substantially more. And we do believe there needs to be a revisiting of whether or not we elect to take the AIP funding.
Is this something that the Airport Commission makes the decisions on?
Yes, as a policy matter, it does.
And does not come to Commerce Committee?
I do not believe so.
Thank you.
Mrs. Walters, do you want to say something?
Yes, I do want to speak to this because it is an accomplishment for women. It's a tremendous accomplishment for women. I think that when we talk about women in non-traditional roles, you are certainly filling a position that's a non-traditional role for women. And I think women everywhere would be very, very proud to see you confirmed today.
Thank you.
And I am particularly proud, I know your parents would be proud, I don't know if your mother's here, but I know your dad, if he were alive, would be extremely proud at this moment. And council members, for those of you who don't know, architect Bob Kennard, who passed away some years ago, but did some work for the city, the last thing he did for the city was the 77th Street Police Station, was Lydia's father. And I'm just very proud of you and your family's tradition of service to the community. And I wish you the very best and a long and fruitful tenure in your position.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Walters.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, I rise simply to say that Lydia Kennard has obviously distinguished herself over many years in a number of contexts. This is yet another example. It proves in no uncertain terms that one can compete and prevail. Our hat is off to you and we wish you well in your new assignment and hope to be helpful as you once again distinguish yourself.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Glanter?
I am here. I just want to say, as I said in committee, I think this appointment is long overdue. Ms. Kennard has not only handled the expansion of Ontario Airport, she's presided over bringing Swissair's maintenance hub to Palmdale, and things are really happening in the Department of Airports that never happened before. And I congratulate you on your, all your achievements as the interim executive director, and boy, have we got plans for you in your role at the permanent position, but congratulations and go to work.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Goldberg?
I don't want to lengthen this too long, but I do want to just add my congratulations and also my gratitude for your role in the living wage issues that have been out at LAX and at Ontario and to tell you that we look forward to working with you to make sure that everybody gets well-paid and well-looked after if they're working at one of the airports run by LAX.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your leadership.
You're welcome.
Mr. Savonich?
Mr. President, I was pleased and proud to move approval in committee this morning. I would like to do so here.
Okay, we have item number seven, and that includes a motion by Mr. Savonich and also the communications from the Executive Committee, item B, so prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Ms. Kennard, you've been approved by the City Council, we want to congratulate you and expect you to work together very closely.
Thank you very much.
A forthwith on that. Next item.
Items number eight through 15 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
Eight through 15, any specials by council members?
Ten, thirteen.
Ten and thirteen, any others?
Number nine, Mr. President.
Number nine. Any others? If not, prepare the roll on eight, 11, 12, 14, and 15. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items number 16 through 32 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Okay, we have cards on 20, cards on 26. Anybody want to be heard in any of the items other than 20 and 26? Seeing none, a public hearing is closed. Any specials?
Eighteen, nineteen.
Twenty-five. Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-five, any others?
I understand Mr. Ridley Thomas wishes item number 31 special.
Twenty-nine. Mr. Ridley Thomas wants 31. Okay, if not, prepare the roll on 16, 17, 21 through 24, 27, 28, 30, and 32. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Forthwith on 27. Mr. Savonich?
Yes, Mr. President, I think it would be appropriate, and item number 30 was a Prop. Five regarding an issue in my district. And what I want to do is that, I think, we just approved item number 30, but what I want to do is to be able to continue the item one week now that we've asserted jurisdiction. Because there's no action except...
Okay, is there any objections?
Item number 30.
Is there any objection to continuing item 30 one week? Now that we have exerted jurisdiction, seeing none, that will be the order.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next item.
On the continuation agenda, items number 34...
Mr. President, on item number 30, and Mr. Savonich, maybe you could help me, being that we've exerted jurisdiction, is it going to go to a committee?
Well, we did, Mr. Hernandez, is to assert jurisdiction and continue it a week to see we could work out the issues, and then in a week we'll determine whether or not it needs to go to committee or...
That's what I...
Yeah, thank you.
Next item.
Items number 34 and 35 on the continuation agenda are items noticed for public hearing.
There are notice for public hearing?
Yes, they are.
Anybody want to be heard in 34, 35? Have no cards, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on 34, 35? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Also on the continuation agenda, items number 36 through 48 are items for which public hearings have been held, item 37 has already been acted on.
Okay, any special by council members?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. Forty-three is called special, any other specials? Any other specials? If not, prepare the roll on 36 through 48, with the exception of 37 which has been acted on, and 43 has been called special. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Forthwith on item 42. Next item.
And also on the continuation agenda, items number 49 through 66 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Okay, we have cards on 62 and 66. Anybody want to be heard in any of the items other than 62 and 66?
Mr. President, forthwith on 45.
Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any specials by council members?
Yeah, Mr. President, we have Mr. Holden calling 53 and 57. Especially, you already have 57, 53.
Huh, 53 and 57?
Yeah, but you already have 57 up there.
No, 50.
I see it on the special board. Okay, thank you.
She did, I didn't, I didn't hear that. Okay, 53 and 57 are called special. Any other specials? If not, prepare the roll on 49 through 66, with the exception of 53, 57, 62, and 66. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Pacheco?
Forthwith on 15 and 45, please.
Let's, one at a time, 15 and 45?
Yes, Sean.
Forthwith on those items. Mr. 60? Forthwith on 60.
And, Mr. President, on 17 and 15, forthwith?
17, and we did 15 already.
I mean, 55, forthwith.
55? 17 and 55, forthwith.
Forthwith on 61, please.
Forthwith on 61. Next item.
Item number nine called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez, you call nine special?
Yeah, and I didn't know if the staff was here, but we should have someone here from the city attorney's office, also, are they on item nine? Where are they coming? Is there anybody in the audience from CDD? Mr. President, can we hold this item on the table? Because I don't see anybody from staff who were instructed to be here.
Okay, we'll hold mine on the, on the desk. Next item.
Item number 10 called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Ms. Goldberg, you call 10?
Yes, I'd like to move a five-minute public hearing.
Is there any objections at the public hearing? We have a David Runston.
David Runston, I'm an economist in the Public Policy School at UCLA. This study of the business team is one in a series that we are working on. We also issued one on redevelopment last year. We've been studying economic development in the city for over two years now. These studies are a joint effort of the UCLA Center for Labor Research and Education and the LA Alliance for a New Economy. They are funded by the Ford Foundation and several other foundations. We intend these studies to be constructive and helpful to the city. Our study on redevelopment was seen as constructive by the CRA, but the mayor's office has taken offense that anyone should analyze their activities in the business team. At the CED committee hearing in January, they issued a response to our report that was filled with misrepresentations and misunderstandings of what we said. Since Mr. Delgado entered that into the record at that time, I'd like to enter our response to their memo into the record at this time, and the city clerk has a copy of that. I believe our study prompted this response from the mayor's office because they know our findings are accurate. our findings are accurate. Among those findings were that less than forty percent of the assistance from the business team went to the industries they said they were targeting. Wealthier areas of the city received proportionately more assistance and poorer areas proportionately less. A surprisingly high percentage of workers in the targeted industries we studied were paid quite low wages. Almost none of the firms we interviewed that had been assisted by the business team thought that the city's assistance was key to their decision to stay in or leave Los Angeles. These findings are the result of, one, the council-district structure of the business team, that is, assigning one business team representative to each council district, which essentially presents the business team from targeting their resources. Two, a lack of any criteria on the part of the business team for deciding whom to assist. And three, the relatively small amounts of money involved in city assistance. The reality is that the city lacks an economic development strategy. I served on the Economic Development Task Force, which is recommending consolidation of economic development functions in the city. And everyone on that task force agreed that the city has no economic development strategy. The city has relatively few resources relative to the private sector. We need to target them to creating good jobs and supporting key industries. In this economy, there are many opportunities that we are not taking advantage of in the city. Every day that goes by without creating an economic development agency is another day of missed opportunities. The poverty rate in Los Angeles is now approaching twenty-five percent of the population. This is the problem of economic development in Los Angeles and not simply one of real estate development. So I urge the council to support the creation of the Economic Development Department, and in the meantime, free up the business team from its council-district-oriented structure so that they can focus their resources better. Thank you.
Ms. Goldberg, did you want to be heard?
I just wanted to call the attention of my colleagues to the report that was heard in CED, and the response, and now the response to the response. But I do think that it's an important part of our discussion, or should be. When we get to that point, we're talking about consolidation of economic development functions. Because I think it does talk about approaches and who's been left out, which are generally the areas of the city that already need the most economic development in the first place. And that we need to have a strategic plan if we're going to actually make any difference to this, as opposed to a one that responds to what anybody might hear as to people trying to come in or people trying to leave. So I just wanted to sort of underline and put a punctuation mark of an exclamation point and urge my colleagues to take a look at these reports because I think the UCLA study was quite comprehensive, and I, at least, found some interesting ideas in it about how we ought to be looking at the whole question of economic development in the city. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez? Yes.
Mr. President, members of the council, I wanted to make a few comments in regards to this whole evaluation and so forth because what we seem to have at committee was not as much disagreement, as much as, I guess, a refocusing of what the work that Los Angeles' business team was doing. And I think there was a lot of concurrence on the mayor's side in regards to part of that refocus. There was a lot of media coverage, and I think that that was more the jockeying of position of some of the players. But what you have before you are recommendations that pretty much both sides agreed on, a direction that the mayor's office's business team wanted to go through, as well as the evaluators had gone through. There's no question that the mayor's office has created a focus, for example, on the genesis areas of the city of Los Angeles. Areas that are basically zoned industrial primarily, that are parcels of land where we could bring job creation, and tend to be in the lower-income parts of the city. And that is one of the recommendations here that they focused their attention there while that's happening. And I think that, on an ongoing basis, you're going to hear more of that. The quality of jobs that are being created by the business team, they also express that direction, looking at the income that's being paid and working hand-in-hand. Now, I'm saying that because I think the report was important because it provided us an evaluation. At the same time, I think that the direction was being met, and I think there was a lot of jockeying by the players, and by that I mean the evaluators as well as the mayor's office, as to how to get it implemented. So what you have before you today are some recommendations that do exactly that, and I just urge a unanimous vote. And again, I wanted to put the sides apart and share with everybody that I think that what's before you is a consensus approach, but it's a direction that I saw us already heading towards, and I'm just appreciative that it's here before us today and ask for unanimous vote of the report.
Okay, Ms. Go enter.
I don't know if the gentleman from UCLA is still here, but if you are, I wanted to tell you not to take it personally. The mayor's office has a tendency to take offense when anybody criticizes them.
Okay, we have item number ten before us. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number thirteen called special by Councilmember Chick.
Mrs. Chick, item thirteen?
Yes, colleagues, I wanted to quickly draw your attention to this item. It's one of a variety of things that your Government Efficiency Committee is taking up, to try and look for ways to make city government work better. And in looking at the city's real estate asset management system, we also started hearing about our inventory system in general. And if you read your committee's very short, two-page report, you'll see that, for instance, our General Services Department, that is the lead agency on this, is telling us some pretty grim news. That we use a variety of systems to track fixed assets, that we don't have any one organization responsible for the accuracy of these systems, that there's now been changes in federal law that's going to require new information, more detailed information about our fixed assets, and there's a lot of work to be done to get a handle on how we keep track of very valuable property and on real estate to make sure that it's being used to its full potential. So I look forward to bringing further steps forward to you as General Services Department, our city controller, and our Information Technology Agency work together to improve these very essential pieces of the city's fiscal system. Thank you.
If anyone else want to be heard on thirteen? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number eighteen called special by Councilmember Chick.
Mrs. Chick?
Well, and to continue on the same track, this is another one of those measures I referenced. As we look at some of the city's contracting processes, this ordinance sets into place a system by which not only our city departments, but the council and the mayor, and our city employee unions, and I believe Councilmember Goldberg is going to address that, be notified well in advance, a year in advance, when some of our long-term contracts are coming up for renewal or for going out to bid. There are several recommendations that have been incorporated into this ordinance, and we are looking forward to a much smoother and improved process and not having departments back up against the deadline where we have to keep renewing existing contractees instead of going out to bid to see if there are better services for a better price for the city of L.A. So I ask for your approval on this ordinance today, colleagues. Thank you.
Ms. Goldberg, did you want to be heard on...
Yes, I did. I think that the notion of having long-term contracts has both an upside and a downside. I am going to support this, but I want to make two points. One is, is that particularly when we come to the notion of renewal of long-term contracts without going out to bid again, that we need to be very sure that all employee unions that might be interested in bidding have an opportunity to take a look at it and to make a request through the appropriate committee, that it not just be knee-jerk automatically renewed, but that they have that opportunity to take a look at it. As we've seen from time to time, particularly as welfare to work gives us an opportunity to use these contracts as an opportunity to train people who need employment and who need employment training, and yet provide good service at a good price to the city through the Vocational Worker Program. We don't want to lose that opportunity. The other issue I want to raise is the living wage issue, which is, is that sometimes when these contracts are rolled over, what we do is we end up passing on to the city's budget, dollar-for-dollar, the living wage increase. Because the contractor says, oh, gee, I can't do that, but sure, if you pay me to do that, fine. And what we have found is, is that when they say that, we should automatically go out to bid again. Because when we bid, we find out that, guess what? We don't have to absorb the costs in the city treasury dollar-for-dollar. In fact, the biggest difference between year one and year two costs in living wage was going out to bid on contracts instead of extending them. So I think both of those issues need to be a part of the rules, and I would ask the Chair of Government Efficiency to either, I don't want to change this because you have it as an ordinance, but to take this back and perhaps bring a second ordinance and involve those two items as additional issues that need to come forward. Because they do need, in my view, to be in an ordinance, that doesn't have to be this one, this can go forward. I know you've labored hard on it, and I'm very happy to support it. But I would like to ask that we have an amendment or a second ordinance that says those two items need to be addressed on long-term contracts. Thank you.
Report coming into committee exactly addressing those two issues?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, prepare the roll on eighteen, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number nineteen called special by Councilmember Chick.
Mrs. Chick, Mr. Holden says you've gone beyond the three... Nineteen you call special?
This chick has an exemption anytime she wants it.
It's, I called this special not only because it's something I've worked very hard at in my district, but more importantly, colleagues, because we've had so many examples of government or government leaders not working together lately, that I thought it would be an optimistic thing to notice that in this item, the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles and our county supervisor, Zev Yaroslavsky, worked very closely together to solve a very pragmatic and difficult problem. And that was inadequate parking at an almost brand-new city library out in the West San Fernando Valley, that from the day it was built, the parking was inadequate. What the county has done is, it has ceded, it has given over to the city of Los Angeles the right to extend Platt Library's parking lot over county flood channel land, at no cost to the city of Los Angeles. So we are finally moving to the design of this added parking, increased parking lot, and solving a public safety problem, as many families and young people who were frequenting this very used library were parking across an extremely busy street and sometimes, unfortunately, not crossing at safe times. So I look forward to continued good work between the city and the county. Thank you, Supervisor Yaroslavsky, for helping to move this through the county, and I'm happy for all of the users out in the West Valley at Platt Library. Thank you.
Okay, we have item number nineteen before us. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Chair recognizes Mrs. Goldberg for her presentation.
And I hope Mr. Pacheco will join me. Mr. President, members of the council, I started to say it's with great pleasure, but actually it's with quite mixed feelings that I... Harold, why don't you come stand right up here? That Mr. Pacheco and I present this certificate to a person who worked for thirty-three years in city, county, and federal levels. In nineteen sixty-seven, Harold began his career, this is Harold Adams, for those of you who don't know him, I can't imagine anybody in this horseshoe that doesn't. He was the first African-American analyst in the county's chief administrative office to achieve that position by exam, and only the second in the county's history at that time. In nineteen seventy-six, he became the first African-American in the city of Los Angeles to be appointed general manager of a city department, and that was the City Demonstration Agency. He's established a number of citywide human service delivery system programs, the citywide neighborhood residential rehabilitation program, the countywide housing opportunities for persons with AIDS or HOPWA program, in his capacities as assistant general manager of both L.A. Community Development Department and the Housing Department. In nineteen ninety-six, Harold retired from the city and assumed the leadership of the very troubled-at-the-time Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority, LASSA, the Joint Powers Authority Agency of the city and county of Los Angeles. Through his dedication, his vision, his expert leadership, he turned that agency around, shaping it into what is arguably the most efficiently-administered governmental social service agency in the county, in the country. Under his leadership, LASSA has been established as a nationally-recognized model for continuum of care and working with the county's homeless population. That's all the formal words. The informal words are these for me, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague. Harold Adams is a man who has both the tenacity and the ability to hold on to something like a dog with a bone to make sure it gets done, and yet the gentleness to do it in a way that doesn't offend people. I don't know how you do that. I'm working on that one still, but he's mastered it. And it is not easy, because the issues, particularly issues dealing with homelessness and other issues that he's taken on in his long and really exemplary public career, are not the easy issues. They're often the controversial ones, the ones that make people nervous and worried about what the public policy is going to be. And I just want to say that I have felt privileged and proud to have an opportunity to work with you, Harold, and to get to know you a bit, and to watch you change an agency that we all had high hopes for, but which was having a hard time getting off the ground into something that really, really provides leadership in an important area in this city. And I want to congratulate you and wish you the best of everything on the occasion of your retirement. Mr. Pacheco?
As Jackie pointed out, it's always with mixed feelings that we recognize our leaders here in the city of Los Angeles, because the people we recognize have given so much to the city. And so part of it is, we want to rejoice in everything they've done, but same time we recognize that there's a loss here for our city. Hopefully, we'll find someone who can fill those shoes, but it's not likely. But to Harold, I just want to say thank you so much as Chair of the Housing and Community Development Committee. It's important that we have individuals like you out there, especially working with the homeless, who are basically a disenfranchised group, and as many advocates as we can find for them, we need to have out there. So thank you so much for doing a good job.
Let me just resolve now, therefore be it resolved, that by the adoption of this resolution, the City Council of Los Angeles hereby joins myself and Councilmember Pacheco in congratulating Harold S. Adams for his groundbreaking leadership, his humanistic vision, and dedication to bettering the lives of some of the most vulnerable in our society, the Los Angeles homeless. I so...
A unanimous vote. Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, thank you. And members of the council, I just wanted to rise, to say a few words about Mr. Adams's tenacity in basically representing not only LASSA but CDD. We went through a block grant... We went through a block grant consolidation process this last year, where pretty much every department head was silent in regards to the needs of their departments. And that was disappointing to me, because every block grant I've had to oversee in terms of developing the budget, every department head would come and advocate on behalf of its department to get the resources they felt were necessary. And what I need you to know is, someone who basically continued throughout his tenure with the city to advocate on behalf of the homeless, but on behalf of basically the human service delivery system, and the City of Los Angeles' basically heart in dealing with the needy was Harold Adams. He was always a straight shooter, and he also understood the system. He understood the block grant better than most people in this city, and he basically explained it to me in many different ways. And I just wanted to recognize him for, because that's what the city's losing. The city's losing an honest administrator who really cared and basically tried to do the best he could in advocating on behalf of the constituencies he was supposed to be serving. And those are some very important traits in a bureaucrat. And it's rare that you have that. And Harold, I just want to recognize you for that, that I really appreciated your advocacy, and I expect you to keep on doing it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Savornic?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I think I would be not a gentleman if I didn't stand up to salute a true gentleman in every sense of the word in regards to all of his work on behalf of a multitude of those less fortunate than ourselves. Harold, you have carried yourself, along with Anik, to the highest standards to getting things done for people less fortunate than ourselves. And you could have done anything with your life, with your talents, but you chose a career path of helping others. And in working with you this so many years, I have been very impressed and very honored to be your friend, and I wish you all the best. You truly deserve it, for you are one of the truly good guys amongst us, and all the best.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Kalenter?
I don't want to make a speech. I just want to say thank you and best wishes, and have a wonderful time with the rest of your life.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ridley-Tomahs?
Mr. President, I prepared a 30-minute presentation pursuant to your instructions. I simply want to say all the.
Your time is up.
Thank you so much. The quickest 30 minutes I've ever seen. Dr. Adams, we salute you on your career to date, and we acknowledge that there is more left in you to contribute to the well-being of not only the city, the county, but certainly much more. Your contributions are well-documented and certainly celebrated, and we wish to pause at this moment to say a heartfelt thank you and all the best in the future.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Harold, your turn.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council. I really appreciate this recognition and this honor. You have been around for a while. You know, this is actually the third time I've retired. I mean, I've made three decisions to retire in the past, and I think this time is going to stick. And Anik and I have decided there are other priorities we need to pursue. One of them is standing right next to me, our grandchildren. Dimitri Fortune lives behind us, so, and he was on two weeks' vacation from school, so he was able to attend with us, but I have two, we have two grandchildren that live in Kernville, because my son works for the Forest Service, so we need to spend time with them. It's really important, I think, the grandchildren and the grandparents bond and help each other. So that's one of the priorities. Another thing we're going to do obviously more of, we're going to spend more time with our, at our place in the south of France. We've had it for a couple of years and been unable to attend as much as we want to, but we're going to spend more time doing that. But I don't want to create the impression that we really are truly retiring. We will stay involved in civic affairs. Anik and I are going to be very active in affordable housing in the future. I've joined the board of a downtown homeless agency, because I think it's very important to stay involved in what's happening in the city, particularly because of the issue that's been very important to me since I've been at LASSA, which has to do with the issue of automated public toilets. I've been involved in that issue from day one, and I'm just not going to give up on it. It's, you know, the city is, L.A. is truly a first-class city, world-class city, but I think it'd be even more so if we get automated toilets in the city. So I'm going to be working on that issue, and I'm going to make you aware that I will stay involved in doing that. I have really, truly, truly enjoyed my last three years at the LASSA. As Jackie said earlier, it was a problem when we got there, it was, but we've grown the organization. It was about $18 million when we got there. Now it's up to about $45 million a year, and we have established a national continuum of care standard that people try to attain to. But I want to take a moment just to recognize the very small staff that did this. You know, we've operated on a, from a 4% to 5% overhead rate for all the years I've been there, which is unprecedented in government work. And I want to recognize the people who did that work, and I want them all to stand, and I want to introduce them. Please stand. I'm going to start on the left, since he's the closest. Paul Rossi is our program manager. Standing next to Paul is Christine Marazzi-Glassco, who's our contract manager. Our finance manager is Siri Calza. Planning manager, Natalie Profant. And the person who's like my partner in this whole process, who's Assistant Director, but now doing two jobs, not only her job, but my job, Robin Connolly. And finally, our office manager, Luis Armaz. I want to publicly congratulate them for the fine job they've done and will continue to do. And again, I want to thank you all for this honor. Thank you very much.
Harold, what about that place in South France? Let's get an audit of the books before you leave.
It's been there for three years, and.
Good luck to you, Harold.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item.
Item number 20, this request from the public to speak on this matter.
Mr. President and council members, item 20 concerns a request that the City Council certify the results of the CRA, Community Redevelopment Agency election in the East Side, for the Project Area Committee, 23 vacancies. I think before the City Council decides to approve the certification of this election, they should start to under, I'd like to make a few points about the theory of community redevelopment. Why so many people are still so anxious to put something which almost turned out to be bankrupt in downtown L.A., where they spent $750 million? The theory of it is that you take tax increment money, which is property tax dollars, and you give it to the CRA, and they take this money and they give it to public developers who use this money for their own private profits. I don't think this is how it's worked. I don't think it can work. But I think it's an idea that a lot of newcomers to the City Council think that that can work with. I think it's like passing bonds, because you give these people millions of dollars, like $150 million was given to Trisec Hall in Hollywood. And very quietly, people don't understand how much money $150 million is. This money can be given and ties private developers to come in there and do money which will give them private property. The main purpose of CRA is that they can amass properties from residential people, put it together, and allow these private developers to come in there who have priority over residential, and then they can use this property to make money, and on top of it, they can go to the bank with the money that the city gives them. If you want bond-issued money to be used for any redevelopment purpose, it should be put on the ballot and voted on by the people. It shouldn't be using the process of community redevelopment, where you take all this money and you give it to these people without a vote of the people. The people are entitled to have that, and that is the theory of CRA. And that's why I think the community redevelopment agencies should not be used to any great extent, any more than they have to be in the City Council, in the City of L.A.
Yes. Okay, the public hearing is closed. We have item number 20 before us. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Item number nine, Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, members of board, I'd like Mr., I guess Michelle Rogers, Mr. Charlie Wu, City Attorney's Office, and Angie, if they'll all come up.
Rudy?
If they would all come up. Members of the council, and I need everybody to pay a little attention here. Item number nine is dealing with the Workforce Investment Act. And basically, what that does is it replaces the old PIC board for the job training programs of the City of Los Angeles. And what we have before us are three major documents that have to be approved. One is a five-year work plan that is basically a framework, and the substance of that work plan will still be put in place. Another document is basically the document of major discussion right now. And what I need you to understand is, when the Workforce Investment Act came down from the federal government, what it did is, in replacing the old PIC boards, it's not silent as to who's liable. What it says is, the City of Los Angeles is liable for any actions in regards to this funding. Now, in the old PIC monies, job training monies, that wasn't the case. At the same time, we are being asked to create a board of directors that will basically oversee this funding. And that board, the issue that's arisen, I think primarily in discussions, and I don't see Michelle up here with the mayor's office, has been the issue of governance, which keeps on coming up time and time again, as we have these deliberations. What I wanted to happen today, and it's because our application and the business plan has to be submitted to the state by April 1st, and today is March 28th. Now, April 1st is Saturday. Now, I need the parties here to discuss the area of disagreement, because what the council did in committee, no different than we've done before, is to ask that these items come back to the council for confirmation. And my understanding that the PIC board, or I take it back, the Workforce Investment Board, has some questions in that area. Yesterday, there was agreement that we could have, basically submit the plans with a 30-day extension, so that it could come back to us in 30 days, and then we could hopefully work these things out. Today, I'm hearing that the City Attorney's Office has a different position. And part of the City Attorney's position is basically concerns about the city's liability. And so I needed all of us to be aware of it. So, one, you've all received a letter to participate in making appointments to the Workforce Investment Board, and we did that because we found there wasn't enough action on behalf of the council in that regard, and this is part of that. Two, I need you to understand the issues from the perspective of the department, the issues from the perspective of the City Attorney's Office, and the issues from the perspective of the Workforce Investment Board, which is represented by Charlie Wu as its president. With that, I'd like to maybe have the department start, then the City Attorney, and then Mr. Wu. And just so that everybody knows, see, my meditation this morning asked me to be gentler, and so I'm trying to be gentler in this decision-making and get everybody to kind of get their input, so that hopefully we can take an action today that allows us to meet the April 1st deadline.
Thank you. My name is Anne Gianni, Community Development Department. I'm going to brief you on three of the items, and then I will turn the fourth item over to the City Attorney and Mr. Wu. There, as you know, the JTPA closes June 30th, WIA opens up July 1. And nationally, for those two actions to occur, there are a lot of mandated documents, three of which are before you today. One is a five-year plan, which is a policy framework for economic and workforce development goals. This has gone through four public hearings and a 30-day public comment period, in addition to one public hearing for the youth plan. This is, can be viewed as a compliance document. Important fact is that it can be amended, and we expect that over time it will get amended. So that, and I have staff here to answer any specific questions you may have. As Mr. Hernandez said, it has to be in Sacramento the end of this week, and we will be sending with it all comments, a summary of all the comments received to date, and we've had good public input on the plan. The second item is an MOU that is required. We are a very large, complex system, so we have developed an MOU between what's called the mandatory partners. They are 19, various, there are agencies receiving 19 different kinds of federal funding. And we have, in the last two and a half months, managed to get all legislative bodies governing those monies to agree to some common language. It is a non-financial document. This will also be amended, because we do have to get into the areas of cost of the system. What Workforce Investment Act does is create a system, and all of these federal streams of revenue are supposed to contribute to the financial support of that system. That is the second round of negotiations we will go through. But what we do have in this, and this also can be considered a compliance document, what we do have here, is all of the agencies receiving these fesional revenues agreeing to participate in the system, agreeing to pay their fair share once that's determined, and agreeing to do some common intake and other kinds of common activities. This is the first of two MOUs. We are going to have to negotiate a second round of MOUs, which we will also bring forward, but this was the one that was required by federal law, so that's why we've started with this one. The last document that you have would be the JTPA closeout plan. The act ends June 30th. The document that we are transmitting to Sacramento is our plan to ensure that the participants in the JTPA system will have a continuing, their service will continue, there'll be no disruption to them. We also had to do some calculations on how much it would cost, the entire system for the City of Los Angeles closed down, and we've estimated that cost at approximately $2.5 million. That's the cost to the city, as well as the cost to the contractors, and that handles all costs we think would ever be attributed to JTPA. That would be personnel costs, accounting costs, resolving complaints, et cetera. And the other item in that plan is what we, an estimate of what we think will be unused on June 30th. This is a real estimate. When you call contractors and say, "How much of your money do you think you'll have spent by June 30th?", they always say, "All of it." So our best estimate at this point is there'll be about $5.5 million that will be unused by June 30th, and that money is eligible to roll into and become WIA money, so we will not lose it. We have estimated a little high per state instructions on the cost of closeout, because if we don't have that number high enough, anything over that number would be, have to be paid by local funds. So we've tried to be conservative in terms of what we think the amount of money that we would need. Those are the three documents that are required that are before you, and I will have a discussion, and I have staff to answer specific questions on any of those. And then the WIB, LEO, WIB stands for Workforce Investment Board, and the LEO part is the local elected official. That will be handled by Mr. Wu and Jesse Hines.
Yeah. Good morning, members of the council. I'm Jessica Hines with the L.A. City Attorney's Office. Several months ago, the Workforce Investment Board, the proposed board, and the city began drafting the document that would guide the implementation of the WIA program in the City of Los Angeles. The reason we are putting this agreement in place is because the Workforce Investment Act states that decisions on funding are made by the Workforce Investment Board, which is a private association appointed by the mayor, and the liability for those decisions would rest with the city. And that's not a situation which the City Attorney's Office would recommend that we enter into, particularly since this grant is upwards of $70 to $100 million a year. There's a potential for a large amount of liability. So what the agreement does is, is it says that the lead policy and primary decisions about how the plan will be implemented will rest with the Workforce Investment Board, but the final decision, if there's a dispute, will rest with the City Council, and that in the event that there's liability, the city will accept the liability for it. In exchange for this, the WIB is, as a private association, is going to be indemnified and held harmless for their role and their activities in running this program in the city by the council. So it's a trade-off. In order for the WIB to feel free about making their decisions, they will not have liability, but the bottom line, the buck stops at the city, and that's what this document makes clear. There are a couple of areas where, in the process of negotiation, some of the issues have not been completed, but I believe that if we were given a day or so, we could have a document in final form that would go forward. Our concern about signing Our concern about signing a document that says it's good for 30 days only with the promise that the parties will finalize it in 30 days is really an agreement-to-agree, which could be thrown out by a court as unenforceable. And because this is critical to the way we operate this program, I think there needs to be final agreement before we commit ourselves to this five-year venture.
Good morning, members of the city council. My name is Charlie Wu. I'm the interim president of the Workforce Investment Board. I come before you today, as was explained earlier. Particularly, I want to talk about the WIB-LEO agreement. WIB means Workforce Investment Board, which I'm a representative of, and the LEO means local elected officials. I must clarify a couple points that Councilman Hernandez made. First of all, we don't really have a problem with the proposed draft. It's just that, for some reason, I have not seen this draft until its current form until this morning. I was out of town yesterday, and I was aware of some changes as of Friday afternoon. The deadline we have now is to submit the five-year plan and the MOU to the state by April 1st. The WIB-LEO agreement is not part of that document that we must submit by April 1st. And I, as of yesterday, I was out of town. I was told that we have this 30-day extension. And as of this morning, we were trying to finalize everything, and I think we are making progress in the back of the room here, and that's where we are now, and I just hope that we have some, a little bit more time to iron out, to have some issues clarified. I just want to emphasize that where I'm coming from, it is important to have private sector representation at the WIB. And the only way you got private business owners to participate is you have rules and regulations that are easily understood, and this thing is going to operate efficiently and smoothly. And I do have some issues. I want to make this agreement easily understood and make this run efficiently so that the private sector would not be frustrated. I'm not, it is, I'm not saying that the necessary requirements are bad, but it's sometimes it's difficult for private business people to understand why we do certain things, and if we can make it simpler, and I think that goes a long way, and that's where I'm coming from, and I, we're making progress as we speak on that issue. And I think I need a little bit more time to iron that out. Thank you.
Anyone else there want to be heard? Ms. Goldberg?
I listened very carefully to everybody, but I still not sure where the differences of opinion are. So could you succinctly, any one of you up there, Mr. Wu or anyone else, say, "These are the areas of disagreement"? Because I, I lost it in all of the discussion. I apologize, but I did.
I think that, in a nutshell, the problem involves sort of the council's role in certain appointment processes, and I don't think that there's a fundamental disagreement.
Okay.
It is simply the wording that was changed, and Mr. Wu hasn't had a chance to look at that wording.
I see. So there may be no disagreement?
Yes, we just-
Hallelujah.
We just need a little time.
I like that. Okay. Do we have time, given what the city attorney said about when this all has to be done? That's the only other question I have then.
It's my hope that if we can spend some time today, by tomorrow, we should have an agreement.
Then I would like to move that we continue this till tomorrow.
Mr. Hernandez?
And, I agree with that recommendation at this time. The reason I thought it was important we put it all on the table is if I misinterpreted Mr. Wu's position. I clearly understood he needed to see it, and I'll succinctly break it down. Some of the changes that we asked for when it came to committee was who is the local elected official in the City of Los Angeles? And the question was, is it the mayor's office? Is it the council? Or is it the mayor and the council? And so in the CLA, working with basically every, all the parties, the wording that they were changing, and again, Ivania can respond to that, was that it's the mayor and the council. No different than it is in previous agreements when we set that up. And what you need to understand here, and we've dealt with it with issues like the Community Development Bank and so forth, is we're being asked to allow a private board to make decisions regarding $75 to $100 million a year, and we, the city, are liable for those decisions. And so when I explain that, it's kind of like, that's why the council wanted to have a role in that process. And so the mayor makes the appointments, it's confirmed by the council, and it goes through that process, and basically the things go through the same way that it did with the PIC board. So that's where I think it's part of the language that's being identified. And I'm sure Mr. Wu is 100% correct when he talks about the need for the private sector to play a greater role in the potential decision-making of job training, because we want them to hire the people that we train, and we want those to be quality jobs. So that's basically it. If it can't, see, and the reason I needed it all before us today is tomorrow it's going to come again, and we're going to have to vote on it. And the reality is, yesterday, there was discussion of a 30-day interim agreement, and today, what I was hearing, no, it has to be all intact. And the reason the discussion of it being all intact, and maybe Mr. Wu can appreciate this, the question is, what is the best position for the city to have when it submits its application in regards to its funding to make sure we're not liable and to make sure we're competitive? And that's why I think the city attorney was saying it should all be intact. I hope I didn't misrepresent anybody. So I support the motion to continue this till tomorrow, and hopefully tomorrow we can have a consensus agreement and just move forward.
There's no objections, the item will be continued one day? Okay.
Mr. President?
Can we take item 29 first?
Okay.
Item 29, Ms. Galanter, you call that special?
I did, Mr. President. The reason I called it-
Special, I don't have a mic here yet. Am I on? The reason I called it special is to introduce an amendment. I'm in full support of your motion to allow construction on Sundays in the downtown area in order to make sure we get a lot of these projects done. One of the other projects that we're working on with the same kind of timetable, which will also be the site of a lot of visitors, is the Oceanfront Walk restoration along Venice Beach. And so my amendment is to include a portion of that, not the portion next to people's homes, but the portion closer to the pavilion as part of the, part of the change in the Sunday restrictions.
Well, this is an ordinance. Can we, Ms. Weingard?
Yes, there is an amended ordinance that the clerk has with the new language in it.
Okay.
So I would then move the amended ordinance.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Okay, Ms. Goldberg?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to ask us to take special one out of order, if we might, and to make the findings based on the fact that this SEIU contract covering 8,500 janitors in the City of Los Angeles will expire on Friday. And what we're hoping will happen by our resolution is at least to raise our voice and urge that something happened positively before then. So if I did it by Rule 16, it would be over before then. I just found out about that it was expiring yesterday. And so the motion is put in today, and we'd ask that we be able to do this by Rule 23. So I would move that pursuant to Rule 23, that there is an immediate need to act, and the need to action came to my attention, and therefore bringing this forward subsequent to the posting of the agenda for today's meeting.
Ms. Weingard, did you want to comment?
I think Ms. Goldberg made the findings, basically, for the council.
What was your point, Mr.?
You mean the city attorney's reiterating Ms. Goldberg's points of order?
All right. There is a current agreement between approximately 16 janitorial contractors and the local SEIU, and it will expire March 31st, which is the end of this week. The negotiations broke down, as I understand it, late last week, and if not resolved, it could result in a strike. And this motion encourages the janitors and the unions to reach an agreement.
And the employers.
Thank you. Okay, prepare the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. President, I believe there are some speaker requests, and I would move a five-minute hearing for them to be able to be heard. And then I'd like to speak.
I don't know if I can read these names, but Mike Gomez, San Bart, and-
Mr. Barton, I think you know who the three people were that signed up cards. Maybe they can come forward and introduce themselves. Maybe, maybe print next time.
Good coverage.
That's what I said. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you. My name's John Barton. I'm with the LA County Federation of Labor. I'm here today on behalf of Miguel Contreras, the executive secretary treasurer. We're here today with the janitors, the 8,000 janitors who do the valuable work of cleaning LA's office buildings, who do the sweeping, the vacuuming, the trashing, and the dusting, keeping our work environments healthy and safe. Yet those who do this valuable work are rewarded, are rewarded today in LA County with poverty wages. Our county is one in which we have, 2 million people are living below the federal poverty level. 2 million adults in the county are without health insurance, yet 88% of them are working. And 70%, I just heard this number the other day, 70% of the 700,000 children in the LA Unified School District come from families living in poverty and eligible for food programs. But the janitors' union has fought back. The janitors' union's been fighting back to take 8,000 working families out of poverty. They've won medical insurance for all their members, and they've been winning incremental raises year by year. There's no better anti-poverty program in America than unions. And today, the janitors again stand on the precipice of a strike with the wealthy real estate industry of LA County and the janitor, and the 16 janitorial contractors who do their work, refusing to honor the needs of these working families. The LA Federation of Labor stands firmly behind the janitors and will take whatever steps are necessary to support their strike, and we encourage our elected officials to do the same. I now want to introduce Mike Garcia, the president of the janitors' union, who has a few words to say.
We're here today to ask for your support. We're facing a tremendous crisis. Our 8,500 janitors that work under our collective bargaining agreement with the janitorial contractors to clean the commercial real estate buildings of Los Angeles, our contract expires at Friday, March 31st, covering these janitors. At this point in time, the contractors are offering a wage freeze for five years. This is absolutely unacceptable. Our people represent Los Angeles as working poor, most of who, our janitors, live under the federal poverty line. They have no choice but to fight back. They're preparing to strike. We are preparing to strike. We need your support today to ensure that the outcome of this current crisis comes to a positive conclusion and sets the janitors on a track of lifting them out of poverty. We ask for your support. I have a janitor here with me that would also like to speak with you. Her name is Maria Cuevas. Maria?
Muy buenos dias, señor concejal, y cada uno de ustedes. Good day to all the council members today. Mi nombre es Maria Cuevas, y soy janitor por cinco años en el área de Los Ángeles. My name is Maria Cuevas, and I've been a janitor for five years in LA. Llevo siete años viviendo en Los Ángeles, y soy madre soltera como muchos de nosotros. I've been living in Los Angeles for seven years, and I'm a single mother. Vengo hoy en especial para pedir apoyo, no solo para mí, pero para miles de janitor que limpiamos estos edificios noche tras noche. I'm here to ask for your support, not just for me, but many of my coworkers, thousands of janitors who clean at night in the buildings of Los Angeles. Soy miembro de la mesa negociadora del contrato maestro aquí en Los Ángeles. I'm a member of the negotiating committee for the master contract negotiations. He estado en la mesa de negociaciones desde el 3 de marzo, desde el 3 de febrero. I've been sitting in negotiations in this negotiation committee since the February 3rd. Hemos pasado ocho juntas hasta ahorita, y lo único que hemos recibido de los contratistas es maltrato y humillaciones. We've been sitting in eight different negotiation sessions, and all we've received from the contractors has been humiliation and mistreatment. Nosotros hemos tratado de negociar de buena fe, pero lo único que ellos nos proponen es quitarnos lo que con tanto esfuerzo hasta ahorita hemos ganado. We've been negotiating in good faith, but all that they are proposing is to take away everything that we've already, we've struggled to get. Los contratistas nomás lo que nos están proponiendo es congelarnos los salarios por cinco años y quitarnos los beneficios que algunos de los 8,500 janitors tienen. All they've been offering has been wage freezes for five years and to take away some of the benefits that 8,000 janitors now have. Lo que nosotros, lo que nosotros queremos es un, es un contrato digno, con aumentos reales. Queremos también días de enfermedad. We want a just contract with real wage increases and also sick days. A veces pienso que los contratistas piensan que nosotros los janitors no tenemos ni mente, ni voz. Sometimes I think that these cleaning contractors think that us as janitors don't have a mind or a voice. Pero nosotros estamos dispuestos a luchar por lo que nosotros nos corresponde. But we are willing to fight and struggle for what is due to us. Para vivir dignamente en este país. So that we can live with dignity in this country. Aunque en la mesa de negociaciones, aunque en la mesa de negociaciones con los contratistas, nosotros sabemos que realmente son los dueños los que realmente nos pueden solucionar. Although we're negotiating with the cleaning contractors, we know that it's the building owners who can really solve this problem. La crisis en que nos encontramos. They can solve this crisis that we now find ourselves in. Pero dada las circunstancias que ellos no quieren negociar con nosotros. But because they're not willing to negotiate with us. No nos queda otra alternativa que irnos a huelga. There is no other alternative than to strike. Los miles de janitor que limpiamos este condado. Thousands of janitors that clean this county. Para todos nosotros es tan difícil encontrarnos en esta situación. For all of us, it is difficult to find ourselves in this situation. Porque nosotros vivimos cheque por cheque. Because we all live cheque by cheque. Pero estamos, pero estamos dispuestos a hacer este sacrificio. But we are willing and ready to do the sacrifice. Para el bienestar de todos los janitor de Los Ángeles. For the livelihoods of all the janitors in LA. En especial quiero hacer énfasis. I would like to just emphasize. En algo que estamos viviendo, en especial las últimas 24 horas. In something that we've been living in around us in the last 24 hours. Los, de los 8,500 janitor, 7,000 pienso que lo estamos viviendo. Out of 8,500 janitors, about 7,000 of us are living this. Los contratistas en todas las diferentes áreas. The contractors in all of the different areas. Lo único que están haciendo es intimidándonos. All they're trying to do is to intimidate us. A todos los trabajadores. Intimidate all of the workers. Esto lo que hace es que nos están haciendo decidir tenernos que irnos a huelga. This is making us-
This is making us, this is pushing us to decide to go out on strike.
Si es necesario.
If it's necessary.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Members of the city council, my name is Juana Quiddis, and I am the executive director for CLU, and I have one of my board members, Reverend Buck Miller, standing here today to speak in favor of the current crisis that is facing the low-wage janitors and families. It's a crisis that we should all be concerned of. Whenever there are those in our community that live in poverty, we should do all that we can to help address this reality. When there are those in our community that are already struggling to lift themselves out of poverty, we should stand with them. We urge you today to stand with these janitors by approving the resolution so that we together can ensure that the families, these families in our community do not face a future that lock them into poverty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that closes the public hearing. Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, thank you very much. This situation, as we all know, in the city is very critical. The real estate market in Los Angeles is healthier than it's been in any time I can remember in the recent past. And yet, the real wages for janitors have fallen and continue to fall behind what they were 20 years ago. So I just want to urge us to unanimously support this resolution, to urge the 16 building owners and janitorial contractors who contract with Local 1877 to reach an agreement on a contract that will allow janitors who clean their buildings and their families to rise above the poverty line by providing wage increases and accept their responsibility in a small way, and it will only be in a small way, to addressing the gap between rich and the working poor in the city of Los Angeles. And I urge that we adopt this resolution unanimously. Thank you very much.
Hold on, hold on. We're not done yet. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President, and Councilmember Goldberg for introducing this motion. I rise also in support of the motion and everything that's contained therein. Something to emphasize, I think it's important to emphasize that everything that is being asked for, contained within the motion and at the negotiating table, economically what it means is one penny per square foot in office space. And we talk about the booming economy, we talk about the thriving real estate market and how rents are going through the roof. I don't think a penny is too much to ask. Please help give these workers dignity.
We're not done yet either. Hold on, guys. I want to get us to a vote so we can actually do it. Mrs. Chick is next.
Yes, and joining my colleagues in supporting today's resolution, I have also sent personal letters to all of the property owners in this list that have property in the West San Fernando Valley. And in that letter, pointed out the common sense practicality, as well as the humane and loftier parts of this in terms of giving people dignity. There's also the common pragmatic economic good sense that with a small step forward on the part of property owners and landlords, it makes a major difference in bringing people, hard-working people, out of poverty and allows them to become active participants in our economy, something that makes economic good sense. We need to support this, colleagues.
Okay. Anybody else? Now, open the roll, close the roll. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Unanimous vote, fourth way. Thank you, colleagues. Unfortunately, we don't have the power to sign the contract. Thank you all for coming. All right, Mr. Clerk, the next item.
Item number 33, a request from the city attorney that this matter be continued until April 4th.
What a nice request, so ordered.
Madam Chair...
Uh-oh, Mr. Hernandez.
Item number 58, which we already passed, I have to ask that we reconsider it and hold it in the table for a week. My understanding is, the action that we passed, we cannot take as the council because the Department of Water and Power is a separate authority. So I just ask that we reconsider the item...
Say that again. What did the Department of Water and Power do?
Well, it's a separate authority, and we were basically transferring money from their budget automatically, and so I'd like to have it reconsidered.
All right. Mr. Wax.
Item 58.
I got it.
I want to support Mr. Hernandez. This is all at the request of the departments, and I wish the departments would...
Get their act together.
Get their act together before they come and ask us all to do these things. I was going to do it for Rudy, because he wasn't going to be here, and then Mike's. And it's very embarrassing, and this is, I think, the second motion yet that's come in that has been improperly done, and it shouldn't be too hard to figure out how to do it right.
Thank you.
As chair of the relevant committee, I couldn't agree with you more. All right, so without objection, we're going to reconsider that and continue it for one week.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item.
Item number 25, called special by Councilmember Walters.
Mrs. Walters? Mrs. Walters, you called item nine special? Or, I'm sorry, item 25?
Thank you, Madam President. I call item 25 special for the purpose of an amendment. And I would move, the amendment indicates, that I would move that the matter of a special event declaration for the 2000 Los Angeles Grand Prix, item 25 on today's agenda, be amended to require the event sponsor, L.A. Events, to send notification of the race and the involved street closures no less than four weeks prior to the event to all residents and businesses which will be affected by the closures for this event. This is necessary, council members, because last year, no such notifications were sent, and we had a flood of telephone calls from people around here protesting it. We had difficulty reaching the sponsors of the event, and it turned into quite a mess. We have met with the sponsors some months ago, and this is not, well, it's not clear whose responsibility it is currently, but this motion will make it clear and make it happen. So I urge, and I vote on that. One other question, very quickly on that. Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion states that it should be declared a special event. Does that mean that fees are waived?
According to the agenda, there is a $2,500 fee waiver included. It does not waive the insurance.
All right. I would like to separate the items for the purpose of voting no on the special event and the fee waiver, and the rest of it, vote aye.
Okay. When we get there, we'll do that. Mr. Wax.
I need the CAO and the CLA here to provide some information. There's a, I clearly agree with Ms. Walters, but there's another, this says to waive, waive all fees, costs, and requirements. That's pretty general. What are the fees, costs, and requirements that we're waiving? What are they financially? What are they? I mean, that's a very big term. I know the negotiations we went through with things like the marathon, for example. Now we're talking about a grand prix. What are the fees? What are the costs? And what are the requirements that we're waiving? And what do they entail? And I don't think we can act on something like this without knowing what we're doing. Has the CAO or the CLA even looked at this? If not, I'm going to move that we continue it for a week.
Hold on, they're both here. Let's have them either say yes or no.
Mr. Fugioke, do you have a report on the impact of this? Mr. Deaton?
In the past, this is, I think, the third year, in the past, we've had staff look at it. I do not recall the specifics.
I'm going to move that this be continued for a week and ask the CAO and the CLA to give us a report on exactly what it is we would be waiving. Costs and specifications.
Only suggestion, if you continue it one day, and if we can't have the information by tomorrow, then we can continue.
I think you should have a written report on this. This isn't, I mean, it's not going to take place till July. You've got plenty of time, and we should know what we're doing before we do it. And I think that we get in trouble when we move quickly, and it may be that it's, it may be something we're all comfortable with, but I really need to ask you to take a look at this before we vote on this. That's why we have requirements, remember, Ms. Chick, on fiscal impact statements and things that always get, you know, I mean, it's so that we know what we're doing up front and not come back later and say, how come you waived this, or how come you waived that? And we say, oh, I didn't know we waived that, we just waived requirements. What requirements? What fees? What costs? So I'd move that we continue it a week and ask for a written report from the CAO and the CLA.
Okay, hold on. We now have three motions. We have a motion to split the question, special event from the fee waivers. We have a motion to add the notification requirement, and we have a motion to continue it for a week. And we have two more people who want to be heard so far. Mr. Holden.
Deaton is originally correct when he says this continue it for a day and a day only, and then he'll come back and meet one-on-one with Mr. Wax and whomever else would be interested. But we just had an Academy Award here, and the Grammys and all, and anybody talk about nothing. So come on, don't be selective in terms of who you're going to decide going to provide some benefit to the city and who should not provide benefit to the city. Looks clear, looks you clear in the eye about where you stand when it comes to who's sponsoring an event and who's not. So I would move, yeah, you can stand up and say all you want.
I just wanted to ask you, maybe you could tell me what the fees, costs, and requirements are.
I don't know what the fees cost. What did it cost for the Academy Award?
I'm just asking you.
No, I'm asking you. You voted on...
All I'm asking you, Nate, what do you want us to vote on?
No, on my time, you voted for waiving the Grammys and the Academy Award. What did it cost? You don't know. Now, we are going to tell you this, but it'll be tomorrow, and I support Mr. Thomas's motion for that purpose. Continue it one day.
But I guess he's going to. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Telepathy could be a dangerous thing, Ms. Philanthrop, Madam President, particularly when someone supports a motion prior to it being introduced. The thing that I wanted to say is, Ms. Walters rightly introduces a motion to cause notification for the residents in the area. I support that. It is a friendly amendment and is an appropriate amendment. As it relates to the main motion, this is the same motion that has been introduced on two previous terms, and I agree that the matter of expenditures ought to be a matter of public record, and they have been in the past, and we can proceed. I see no substantial reason for delay in this regard, and would simply ask the members of the council to treat this as it has been treated in other instances. And in the other case, for those who believe that these events bring value, we should support it. Those who have the view and who have consistently opposed fee waivers for events of this sort should maintain their tradition. But I would simply ask for us to dispose of the item today. It is before us, nothing particularly extraordinary about it. Some believe that it's an appropriate thing to do, others say otherwise. So, Mr. Wax, nothing particularly problematic if it's a day to review it. I mean, the public record speaks for itself. This is the third time the event is taking place. Each time, it has been refined so that it is a better event, a better public impact for the city. There are those on the council who do not believe in supporting such. We understand that position, we take exception to it, and we can vote. And however the votes land, I am prepared to abide by that, Madam President.
So, all right, just let me understand. Are you moving that we continue it one day, or are you moving that we not continue it?
I'm moving the item today.
All right. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, I kind of rise with mixed feelings, because I'm one of the persons who normally supports these items, and I think that there's a reason why Mr. Wax and Ms. Walters are asking the question, because I, and maybe Mr. Ridley Thomas could share some clarity here. I know that he's busy discussing with Mr. Wax, but, Mr. Ridley Thomas, you might not have his vote either way, but you could have mine, so I just wanted to ask you some questions directly. This is the third year of the event, and I've gone to the event. I think it's a positive for Los Angeles when it happens, and each year, it does get better. And what we've done is, we've taken it off most of the major streets of the city, and now, part of, a good part of it happens at Exposition Park itself. But one of the things that is different about us taking these actions, and I'll include the Dodgers in the mix, because they have, when the baseball season happens, we've traditionally waived a lot of issues. And I have a question, because there's a special tube before us today that's dealing with a crisis with the Department of Animal Regulations in terms of the adding an annex, in terms of personnel, and so forth. Mr. Ridley Thomas, what's the public benefit besides the NASCAR race being held in Los Angeles? What other kinds of things is this promoter doing as a public benefit to the community that surrounds it? Could you share that with me?
Well, there has been any number of negotiations with the stakeholders in Exposition Park when the event first began. That is to say, the museums, and they have had ups and downs with that. But part of the agenda has been to be of service and assistance to them to the extent that is possible. In addition to that, the first time it came about, there was an economic analysis that talked about the impact of the Grand Prix in Long Beach that has a favorable impact on the economy, and it's an attraction. It's the largest spectator sport in America, even more so than football, as it were. News to me, and my point of view, is simple. If it brings value, if it brings excitement, if it affords recreational opportunity in the city of Los Angeles, that's in part what we like to do. I have no particular reason to think that there's anything extraordinary that happens today or with the event this year than it was in the past. And the CLA makes the point that we have two years of history with respect to this, and between the CAO and the CLA, they can find that out and come back tomorrow and report out. I would so move.
Mr. Wax.
I appreciate Mr. Ridley Thomas's willingness to at least continue this one day. This has nothing to do, let me tell you where I'm coming from, so you all know. This has nothing to do with whether I like the Grand Prix or not. In fact, I do. And whether I think it's good for the city or not, in fact, I do. It is about a council not knowing what it's voting on. It is about a council voting to waive fees, costs, and requirements without a single person here knowing what the costs and requirements are. Well, if you think that you can just vote on something that waives requirements when you don't know what they are, because you want to take care of your friends, Mr. Holden, you can go right ahead and do that, but I don't play that game. I at least want to know what it is I'm talking about before I do it. Nobody here knows what the requirements are. I'm only asking, Nate, that we know what it is we vote on before we vote on it. That is a reasonable request, and it is an unreasonable request to ask us to vote on something blindly. Mr. Ridley Thomas is willing to move it a day to get that information. I will more than accept that, and we'll have it tomorrow, and then we can have the debate, Nate. But, I mean, nobody here has the answers. I know that you'd like to know what you're voting on, Nate.
On your time, Mr. Wax.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't want to go back and recount all your votes about, on an issue such as this, of which you had no knowledge. We won't even go into that. But what I will say is this, that we just had a big event. I don't know what it cost. All I know is that it was good for the city of Los Angeles and everybody around the world... watched it, and they say they were from Los Angeles. These kinds of races are the most watched sport in the world, and eventually we'll be doing what Long Beach is doing. I mean, they pride themselves on their race. We just got started three years ago. There's a history about what it costs, what the sponsors paid for, what the city paid for, if anything, and I don't know. But I can tell you this, it was successful for two years. I've gone over there and I've watched the people come, and I've watched the excitement and the fact that they enjoyed it. So, Mr. Wax.
All right, you're still on his time.
Well, we'll have the information tomorrow, and then we can have the, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Okay, now, Mr. Holden, you're actually entitled to another turn if you need it.
Let me give some of my time, Mr. Wax, just to be fair.
No, I think, I think, I was going to suggest it, but I think we've done.
All right, well, okay, and I would say, Mr. Thomas, you agreeing for one day?
Yes.
One day, and the amendment that has been attached is fine as well.
Right, so now that what we.
And in that day, would we ask the CAO and CLA to tell us specifically what the fees, costs, and requirements are?
Yes, and what the requirements are that we're waiving. Yes, we, I think that was clear to both of them when they were up here. I would just like to add to this that I had to vote on the earlier incarnation of this race when I was at the Coastal Commission years ago, and we did, in fact, impose a notice requirement. It worked very well, and I think it's a wonderful idea.
Excellent idea.
We should certainly do that. All right, so we're going to continue this until tomorrow and ask the CAO and the CLA to tell us exactly what it is we're waiving. I think I hear a consensus, or we can wait until tomorrow to vote on the amendment, and then Mrs. Walters has asked that the waiver be split, but we'll deal with that tomorrow as well. So, let us move on to the next item.
Item number 26, a request from the public wishes to speak on this matter.
We have a card from Mr. Bill Icke. Oh, we have several cards, sorry. So, we're going to, we're going to start with a 10-minute public hearing and hope that works. Mr. Icke, followed by Rizalat Decrowell, Phyllis Hines, and Kathy Delsen.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Bill Icke, I'm the president of the Shadow Hills Property Owners Association. Shadow Hills abounds or borders the Hanson Dam area. This has to do with putting the Children's Museum in Hanson Dam. We're opposed to this. Hanson Dam is a rural area. It is not, they want to put this on a one-and-a-half acre parcel, which is about 60,000 square feet. They've got an 80,000-square-foot structure. This is going to go multiple stories in an area that is basically a horsekeeping area. It's not as available to public transportation or accessible to public transportation as other proposed areas, and we think that this is not appropriate. Also, in addition, I'm on the Regional VNA committee for Prop K, and in that very same one-and-a-half acres is where the Prop K is spending $2.5 million to put in an environmental center. And as you may remember from our discussions with respect to the Tohanga Wash, the Hanson Dam area is the home of a lot of environmental, environmentally sensitive species, both plants and animals that are endangered, and an environmental center is perfectly appropriate there, but they want to put that, the Children's Museum in the same place and the only place where you can put the environmental center. And I just think that that's inappropriate. Thank you very much.
Ms. Decrowell.
I'm Rizalat Decrowell, and I live in Lakeview Terrace. I kind of, Bill Icke alluded to the problem with transportation accessibility, and that is, that's where I have great misgivings. This area is in the most northern part of the eastern, San Fernando Valley. At any rate, there is no blue line, there is no green line, there is no MetroLink, there is no red line, and we have freeway access, yes, and that may be good for school buses. However, I'm a retired teacher, and it has been my experience in the classroom, those children, for the most part, that had success in the classroom is when school activities were continued outside the home with family in an extended way for enrichment. So, hopefully, I think, particularly with the vision to the future of freeways being crowded and more and more problems, we don't know what to do, the location should be situated near public access to where families can come and not depend on a freeway, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hines, followed by Ms. Delsen.
Good afternoon, my name is Phyllis Hines. I reside at 11515 Orcas Avenue in Lakeview Terrace, and I'm here representing the Lakeview Terrace Improvement Association. First of all, I'd like to compliment and thank our councilman Alex Padilla for suggesting this site. When we first heard about it, we were overjoyed. Such a prestigious museum in our community was a welcome thought, and we thank him for considering the welfare of his community. But when we saw the size of the Children's Museum at 80,000 square feet, that did stop our enthusiasm because we felt that was too large of a building for too small of a site, and therefore, we just would hope it would be beneficial to our community to have this museum. We would hope that it would be a smaller museum, maybe reduced by half or even less because that is a very small-sized lot. And if we can't have it in Lakeview Terrace at a smaller-sized building, we would recommend North Hollywood because it's subway-accessible to downtown, and we think that the North Hollywood site has much more acreage and better transportation. So therefore, at this point, we're supporting North Hollywood and would love to support Lakeview Terrace, but we just think it's too large of a building. So, oh, I have a couple of letters here from people, I better read them, I forgot about them. This is from the Lakeview Terrace Homeowners Association. It says, "Dear council members, we do not believe the Hanson Dam area proposed for the Children's Museum would be the best location for the project. This location would not benefit the greater Los Angeles families. We are not in favor of this location. We do support the location of this project in North Hollywood area located by the Metropolitan Transportation Station. This location would benefit and maximize the families because it can be accessed easier by mass transit unlike Hanson Dam area." And then I have another letter from a community activist, her name is Tamma Lockwood, and she says, "Dear council members, the proposed site for the new Children's Museum at Foothill Boulevard and Osborne Street in Lakeview Terrace is totally inappropriate, being too small and already designated for an environmental center. To construct an 80,000-square-foot building on this one-and-a-half-acre site is also unacceptable for the area. Parking would not be adequate on-site. Even with the overfloor parking at the Future Library, traffic would greatly increase at the very busy corner on a major intersection in Lakeview Terrace."
Ms. Hines, I'm going to ask you to stop there. I think the point is clear, and I do want to give Ms. Delsen a chance to be heard.
All right, thank you very much for hearing our.
Hi, my name is Kathy Delsen. I am an activist, I guess a community activist, in the Shadow Hills, Lakeview Terrace area. I wanted to read one statement from our community plan very quickly. It says, "The community includes large areas of open space and natural landforms. It is one of the more rural areas of the city and supports a substantial equestrian-oriented population. It is a policy of our community plan to protect these areas from encroachment by incompatible uses." Now, it's interesting, I've been to several community meetings that have been broadly based in the area that were hosted by recreation and parks, and the kind of usage that the community really is espousing is really low-area usage, such as an improved amphitheater that we have in the area. We'd love Mr. Padilla to help us find some funding for a skateboard, bike park, rollerblading area, nature, a nature reserve, nature preserve area, and then designated hiking and horse trails. This area is also located in an area designated as a scenic corridor, so the community is really not interested in areas that, you know, there are buildings that would block these views. It is viewed by Rockin Parks as the last great wilderness, and we hope to be able to use that area appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing, and I have two members who want to speak. I also want to point out to all of you that we are now down to a bare quorum, and we do have at least one item that has to be heard in closed session today. So, we will now go to first Mr. Wax, then Mr. Hernandez, and then Mr. Padilla.
Well, it's Mr. Padilla's motion.
Mr. Padilla's, we'll call Mr. Padilla first.
Let me refer to him first.
Thank you, Madam President. Before the members speak, I understand their staff here ready to speak on the item and address some of the questions that were raised, and I'd ask that you hold my time.
I did.
Basically, Mr. President, Madam President, and members of the council, basically the situation is that because, originally, the Children's Museum was going to be located at Griffith Park. That has not worked out satisfactorily, so since it's a citywide facility, we're looking at alternatives that would beat, that basically for the Children's Museum to be located in any site, it requires site control and environmental clearance. And so, there are several sites that are being reviewed as a possibility for location. This is one of them. There is also the Art Park near Little Tokyo and others that are being, one along the, next to the North Hollywood Metro Station, et cetera. In each of those cases, there are related environmental issues and related site control issues which are being worked out. Those need to be worked out in the next few months, and so this is just an effort to, in this instance, to at least allow this site to have the possibility of being selected. This is not a final decision on this site.
Okay, Mr. Padilla.
Mr. Drucker, would you like, would you like to add anything, Mr. Drucker?
Just as Mr. Adetin stated, we are looking at a number of sites. There will be environmental documentation, full public disclosure for each of those sites prior to any formal site selection, or at least with the city. And I just want to ensure the council that as far as the issue of the Environmental Awareness Center, the Children's Museum is aware of that, and they would fully incorporate the Environmental Awareness Center components into the Children's Museum project if this site is ultimately selected for the Children's Museum. As far as the site's size, we're looking at that, and we have our consultants and the engineers ensuring that this project would, in fact, be feasible, and their initial determination is, yes, the project is feasible on this site that is adequately sized for the project.
Okay, now.
Thank you, Mr. Drucker, and I think that was a very important point to make in terms of the Environmental Awareness Center, which was committed to the community. And I appreciate the community members who came down here to express some of their concerns and some of their questions. Today, I still remain committed to pursuing Hanson Dam as the possible future home of the Children's Museum. We're looking at an area, in the Hanson Dam area, of more than 2,000 acres, the vast majority of which remain open space. I thank the city staff for being here and explaining as to why we should continue to consider it, why it could be a good, if not a great, location more than just being suitable. And I refrain from making the pitch today as to why I believe Hanson Dam is the best of all the locations. All I can say is that since there's been some recent news coverage about the possibility, my office has been inundated with phone calls and letters of support, some of which I have here with me today. People are excited about this possibility, and I know this isn't the final step. We're still in the early stages of making this decision or exploring the possibilities. But Hanson Dam could be a great one, and I think it would not only be great for Council District Seven, but it could be great for the city of Los Angeles. The Children's Museum is a regional attraction. I'll leave my pitch at that because I can get very excited about this, but I would ask for your support on today's motion and your possible support as decision-making goes through its process.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wax is next.
Yes, Mr. President, I could understand Mr. Padilla's enthusiasm. I think all of us are enthusiastic, and, you know, normally there are sighting problems. No one wants a dump in their backyard, no one wants a recite. Everyone wants a Children's Museum because it's a phenomenal, of course, you're getting, you're getting that. We want it in North Hollywood, Mrs. Walters wants it, I think Mr. Hernandez has a site, Mr. Ridley Thomas has a site, and it's understandable because Children's Museums are the kinds of things that a city should provide to its people, and in a city the size of Los Angeles, perhaps in more than one site. Because it is an extraordinary resource, and it serves an amazingly useful function that all of us are excited about. I had put in a motion last week, Mr. Adetin, and it went to committee, which asked that you look at all six sites and any others. Because I think that the reasonable, I mean, I could have just easily put one in for North Hollywood. And Ms. Walters had one for downtown, which is a site that I first recommended years ago yet to the Children's Museum people because it seemed it would be next to the Japanese National Museum and the TC and others, and that was a good site. There are a number of good sites. I know that there's one, I think, Mike, in your district, and others. So, it seemed to me that the proper approach was to ask that all six sites be looked at, the pros, the cons, and in the end, we're not be the only ones to decide. The Children's Museum, who's going to have to foot the bill for much of this, is going to have to decide where they want it. So, it has to be a cooperative effort. And it seems, while I can understand the enthusiasm, both Ms. Walters had, I think, a motion in last week similar to Mr. Padilla's, now Mr. Padilla has one. We'll all put those motions in, and I think in the end, we really should agree that the proper way to do this is to have all six sites and any others be looked at fully so that when it comes back to us, we have not only recommendations, we have all of the facts. And it won't be an easy decision because this is something everyone wants instead of something everyone doesn't want. But I would really think, Mr. Adetin, it would be appropriate for this motion to be considered with all the other sites.
The, there's the difference in, for example, at the MTA site in North Hollywood, site control is the prerogative of the MTA. What the motion that, the two motions on the Art Park and Hanson Dam allows to be, allows those two sites to be on equal footing with MTA. If we did not allow for this negotiations, then a requirement of Prop K process is to have site control. This allows the city to allow for site control in both of those instances, so at least it can be considered. Without it, it cannot be considered.
And I think it should be considered. The only thing I want to make clear is that I'm certainly not prepared and don't want in my vote to indicate taking sides on any site now until all six have gone through the kind of analysis in the community and the city and the Children's Museum, and then we'll have decisions to make, and they may not be easy, but we'll, again, we'll be making them on a more informed basis.
Right, the process essentially will be, of those that are still standing, if you will, after site control and environmental review, will be reviewed with, both by the Children's Museum and the Prop K Steering Committee, and that will then be forwarded on to council for final decision.
Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, I have to rise and state that I think today is a sad day for the direction of the Children's Museum, and it's because when this all started, I remember the chairman of the board coming to me and saying, "We want to put the Children's Museum where it's accessible to all the children of the city of Los Angeles." And at the time, the vision said, "Put the Children's Museum at Griffith Park." And I remember looking at a map where basically the population under the age of 18 lives, and you need to understand that the majority of that population clearly lives in the inner city. A good part of it goes towards South Central, and then it expands to the valley. If there is a place in the valley where you have strong young population, it is the North Valley of Mr. Padilla's district. But the intent was to find a location that was centralized for all children. And I say that because accessibility was important. Now, the reality is Griffith Park did not become the chosen site, and what we have before us is a lot of options. And the farther away we get from that central location, I think the farther away we are from the reality of trying to provide a museum for all the children of the city of LA. Now, Prop K is basically, and with councils taking actions to provide funding, up to $10 million of bond funding for the Children's Museum, and site location is important. I need to share with you that the site that I've been talking about in my district just recently has been a controversial site in the community because it's the old Vandy Camps Bakery Site, which has a facade of an old, you know, Holland-type atmosphere that people wanted to preserve and had a natural turnaround for buses. But the Children's Museum isn't interested in that site, and it was bothersome to me when I heard that because its location happened to be central to all the children of the city. So, it seems to me now, it's kind of like, where can we get the best deal? And we're losing some of the principles that we were establishing. And I'm saying it quite openly because now everybody's submitting motions. And I think that we as a council, and I kind of join Mr. Wax, because what we really should be doing is deciding where's the best place for a Children's Museum in the city of Los Angeles, and then trying to. of Los Angeles, and then trying to figure out how to provide that funding. You see, the Children's Museum already got $1 million from the State of California, has a commitment of $10 million from the City of Los Angeles. So we need to take into account those principles. And I just wanted to bring that up, because, yes, we're all going to introduce motions where we think it's going to happen. I think that in the process, the traveling museum is dying.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect timing. Mr. Holden.
I agree with Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Wax.
Now, which one's reputation is going to be hurt the most by that?
Yours.
Probably.
I just want to say that, my good friend, Mr. Padilla, that I think everybody in your district, certainly throughout the city, recognize your intent, that the Hanson Dam Recreation Center—that's what it's going to end up being—is a suitable place for the Children's Museum. However, it's not the centrex, not the center of the city, when you view it from Mr. Hernandez's points of views, in terms of thinking about bringing some kid from San Pedro all the way out to the, you know, Hanson Dam area, rather than Griffith Park or someplace centrally located. It's going to be impossible for some to even view a Children's Museum, you know, who live in that general area. Certainly, it would serve the people in your area, and that's what you intend to do. I can't think of anybody who speaks more forcefully for their district than you, in this regard, and others as well. So I commend you for that, and you should be remembered for the good work you do. However, I think this is a matter—if you vote on the first moving motion, it says that we should sign a lease already, Mr. Deaton, and, you know, I don't think that's what you guys intend to do. Is that correct, or do you?
What?
Huh? You're saying you'd sign the lease? You're not saying studies says that instruct the Department of General Services, Asset Management Division, which assists the city attorney and the CLA, to develop a lease agreement between the city. Come on, what are you talking about, Mr. Deaton?
What I'm talking about, Mr. Holden, is to allow—this allows the site at Hanson Dam to compete.
All right, fine. On my time before it runs out. Have you—what about the other five sites? Do you have a lease agreement?
In those instances, we're in the process of doing the same thing for the Art Park in Little Tokyo.
Lease agreement?
Lease agreement.
Oh, well, fine.
In the case of MTA, we cannot give them a lease agreement, but they are proceeding to get a lease agreement with MTA in order that that site can be.
All right, but we have to treat Mr. Padilla equally, so.
That's my point.
All right, so, fine. I'll support the motion.
My goodness, you agreed with Mr. Deaton also. Four in one—in one.
It's a banner day.
I still have 34 seconds left.
Yes, you do. Thirty-one.
And so, on that statement, Madam Chair, I would say, Mr. Deaton is sometimes on the right side.
Just like a stopped clock. Right. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate your support, Councilmember Holden. Thank you, Mr. Deaton, for clarifying those questions, and I hope we can move forward today. I did want to just mention that the motion needs to be amended to include not only the participation of the Department of General Services, but also the assistance of the Department of Recreation and Parks, and some technical language that I'll submit to the clerk.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with the amendment? Hearing none, we'll assume the amendment is incorporated. Oops, Mr. Wax.
Just—I just wanted all—that it be clear that our motion, our action today, just as it was with Ms. Walters, in no ways makes a determination that we choosing any one particular site. But that we're asking that all of them be looked at, in essence, equally. That the—that they be able—allowed to go through the procedure, that this will allow Hanson Dam to go through, just as we approved Ms. Walters' motion that allowed the Children's Art Park to go through, and that eventually, they'll all come back and we'll have a full— And this is going to require a lot of public input, because the public—this is a public's museum. They are our children, and their parents.
I couldn't agree more.
Just for point of clarification, that's what the technical language that was added specifically requires, that the Children's Museum go through the environmental process and obtain site control prior to the final lease agreement.
Okay. Now, open the roll on the item as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. All right. Now, because we are a little tight on the quorum here, I'm going to recommend that we go next to—I'm sorry to do this to all of you in the audience—that we go next into closed session, deal with an item that has to be dealt with today, and we will then resume the public session and carry on with the agenda. So if you are not involved in the executive sessions, I must ask you to vacate the chamber. We will welcome you back when we're done with the executive session.
Put some chairs in the hallway.
That's actually a very good idea, Mr. Shapiro. That sounded like Mr. Shapiro.
What does that have to do with it?
Because, I mean, we start with the premise, all of them are inadequate.
Okay.
Get them from the county. Get them to the local. Hire some of them.
That's what I'm saying.
But don't go and take them from the other place. It's hard. It's a tragedy. Put hard in there. I don't care. We're back on the map.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're back. There are only 10 of us. Don't anybody sneak out. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 43, called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Ms. Goldberg. Your mic's there.
Item 43A, which I will move, and then I'd like to just explain a little bit about what's been happening, so that you can keep up. Item number 43A takes the recommendations of item 43 and substitutes recommendation two with new language, which instructs the Link Banking Community Oversight Board, after its first meeting—which will be on April 11th—to report to the CED Committee with recommendations as to how the city should proceed with future contractual relationships with U.S. Bancorp. And it deletes recommendation number four until the Link Banking Community Oversight Board has submitted their final recommendations. For those of you who have not been following this scenario, what's been happening is that this particular bank has purchased two additional banks, small banks on the West Side in Los Angeles, as a part of its consolidation of smaller banks throughout the state and actually throughout the nation. It's getting to be a very large organization. Under the Link Banking Ordinance authored by Mr. Ridley Thomas, we took a look at its community reinvestment program in the Personnel Committee. And as we looked at that, actually, it was looked at in CED first, then we saw it in HCNR with Mr. Pacheco as chair, and we came to the conclusion that they were investing actually less than they had been investing prior to their mergers. The direction was given to them by the CED Committee, if I'm not mistaken, to go to CRC and to begin negotiations. My understanding is that they have so done and have made some significant changes in what were the objections in the first place. That now must go to the Link Banking Community Oversight Board, which is April the 11th, and then from there to CED. We hope that the Chair of CED will do that very promptly afterwards, because there's a lot at stake—for the bank, and it is the view of my office that all of this was worthwhile, because it really changed their behavior and their attitude about investing in Los Angeles, but we want to complete the loop before we actually remove the ban entirely on their being able to compete for city contracts in the financial services area. So, we're taking a step forward. This is a short way of saying what I just said, is we're taking a step forward. I urge an "I" vote on 43A, and therefore, on 43, once amended.
Okay. Seeing no other speakers, open the roll on item 43A, which amends 43. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And do we need, then, a separate vote on item 43? Probably. Let's just vote. All right. So we'll just open the roll on 43 as amended. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Unanimous vote. That is approved. Okay. Next item.
Item number 45. There is a request from the public to speak on that matter.
What happened to item 26? The special?
I don't know. That's before my time. What happened to item 45?
Twenty-six was acted on that. There was an amendment.
I think that was approved when Mr. Farrar was still in the chair. No? Well, let us finish the agenda while we check that out.
Oh, yeah. Twenty-six was dealt with.
Yeah.
Twenty-six, but item 30, 37, they weren't dealt with.
You voted for it. The record shows you voted for it, Mr. Deaton. Okay. Next item. Forty—what are we up to, Congress? Forty-five?
Now, it's 45, yes.
Okay. Item 45. I don't have—I don't have any cards on 45. Wait a minute. I did have a card on 45. Hold on. Item 45. Ms. Angela McGann? McGann?
No.
No longer here, I guess. All right. Well, in that case, we'll close the public hearing from the Central City Association for the proposal. So, item 45. Anybody on the council have anything to say? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Excuse me.
Ten ayes. No, it's not 11. Thank you. That is approved. Fourth with on that, let's go to the next item.
Item 53, called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Item 53. Mr. Hernandez, push the little—Mr. Holden, push the little button. There you go. Mr. Holden, it's your turn.
Is the General Manager here?
Yes, I am. George Lucas.
Yeah, well, tell us why you think you need this position. Do you have to recuse yourself from this one also?
No, sir, I don't.
Well, you recused yourself the other day, last week, I think. Is that correct? Even though you sat at the table, you should have not have been at the table. I think about that. We look at some of that matters. But anyway, tell us why you need this.
This—the assistant—we're asking for exemption from the civil service provisions for the Assistant General Manager of Administration. This is one of two positions that are exempt from civil service. We've had—the this position was previously exempted before due to a vacancy from retirement. We're asking for that exemption again.
This person, would he be qualified to take over the position if it should have become vacant as General Manager?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the question.
Oh. Would this individual that you have set up for this job, do you have a person in mind?
No, sir. It's going to be done through open within the city, city personnels.
Should it be a person who would be qualified to assume the position of General Manager, should that position become vacant?
I would assume that the qualifications would be for the AGM, and whether or not they would qualify for the General Manager or to act on behalf of the General Manager, they certainly would be able to be qualified to act on behalf of the General Manager. We have two positions.
I mean, the qualifications—how does your qualification is better than what you have as Assistant General Manager? Your qualification is better, same as, or duties are?
Well, I think as a person, as an Assistant General Manager, they would gain experience by the tenure that they would have in that position that would gain them the experience to act on matters that the General Manager would act on.
And then therefore, could assume the position of General Manager, should the General Manager's position be vacant.
That is correct. That is correct.
So—we look into that.
We look at it as a natural stepping stone for that.
We're looking forward to that.
Mr. Hernandez, you're up next.
I just wanted to—one ask. Ms. Goldberg just gave me a little clarity, but all the Assistant General Managers become exempt as of July 1st. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right. So our action today is no different than what would be happening then, anyway. But I think one of the reasons—and again, trying to be kinder and gentler to Mr. Holden, one of the reasons these questions kind of come up is normally, CED gets an opportunity to see these issues, and this was kind of automatic for us, but personnel was reviewing it because of the exempt status of the request. And I have a clear understanding that this was a position that currently existed, and we're re-establishing it. I mean, we're not changing anything.
No. And it was exempt prior to that. That's correct.
And so, it's continuing what was already in place. And so, I just ask for a unanimous vote on the issue.
Ms. Goldberg.
I was just going to remind people that it's now or it's later, but all Assistant General Managers are exempt. I didn't think that was a good idea. I lost. We're just not going to stop these now, because in a couple of months, it's going to be true anyway.
Well, this way, they get to start.
Exactly.
Hiring sooner. All right. Anybody else? Open the roll on item 50, whatever this is, three. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
That is a failed.
Ten votes required.
Holden.
Holden over for a day.
It was Holden voting no.
Yes, no, we got that. It's 53. It's the item that's going to become effective in July, in any case.
Madam President, point of order.
Yes.
Point of ecclesiastical privilege.
Yes, go ahead.
Although this is not a sanctuary, there is opportunity for redemption, and we hereby extend it to our esteemed colleague from the 10th District. Conversion is offered unto you. Otherwise, we will summon you to the mourner's bench and cause you to be subjected to all those things that you learned when you were a young lad, Mr. Holden. I think he wishes to move for reconsideration.
Well, we'll have to ask him. I don't think you'd get to do it for him.
What was that all about? You know?
I know that was strange language to you.
I want the public to know.
That you killed it.
No, no.
And you'll stick on in July.
One vote cost, and they has got the most. And here's a clear example of that.
Okay. In that case, we're going to move on. It is disapproved. You're both out of order. We're going to move on to the next item.
And with that, I'll ask for reconsideration to the previous item.
It'll be continued until tomorrow.
He asked for reconsideration. He asked for reconsideration.
Asked for reconsideration. That was very nice.
Because one vote does make a difference.
So we're going to ask Mr. Ridley Thomas whether you got redemption yet. All right. Mr. Holden has moved to reconsider. Is there any objection to reconsidering? The matter is once again before us. Clear the roll, then let us open the roll, as it is once again before us, and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
My goodness, he has gotten redeemed.
Didn't my Lord deliver Daniel?
All right. Now, we'll move on to the next item. Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Item 57, called special by Councilmember Ms. Kowski.
Item 57.
Madam President, this is just asking the council to endorse Assembly Bill 1913. It basically is a criminal—a juvenile justice bill to augment, actually, Prop 21, supplement it and complement it, in terms of instead of just it listing the issues for incarceration and how people will be treated as juveniles committing a crime, it deals with intervention and prevention, and seeks money from the state level to go to a lot of nonprofit programs within the communities, many of which we work with. But I thought, this is a bill that's moving very quickly, otherwise, I would have asked it to go to committee. It did pass Public Safety Committee in the Assembly. It's honest way to appropriations, and it is on a fast track in the Assembly, so I thought the council's endorsement of it would be, hopefully, useful and appropriate in an expeditious manner.
Okay. Mr. Holden.
Madam President, this matter is not properly before us. It takes 10 votes to hear it, and you didn't ask that question. She just stood up and spoke, so it's not properly before us, because it's Rule 16, so you need 10 votes. But having said that.
If it's not properly before us, you can't talk. We'll take the 10 votes first.
You want me to vote no again?
I'm just following your advice, Mr. Holden.
All right. Then the S—then call.
We need ten votes to consider.
That's right.
All right, open the roll on whether to consider this item. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is now before us, and Ms. Kowski, having spoken, it is now Mr. Holden's turn.
All right, fine. Uh, this is an item that truly, truly should be going to committee. It's very complex, uh, I could have voted to do that, and I didn't. I was persuaded by what Ms. Kowski had to say. I think it's going to go to committee, anyway, but we can support the intent of this proposal to ally, to proceed, and then refer the matter to committee, uh, to review it in detail. The language of the bill, we don't have, I'd like to know, maybe we can amend it, we can make it even better than what it really is, and we do that in committee, usually. So, I would like to say yes, let's give an aye vote for the legislative intent to include this in our legislative program, uh, with the provision that it'll go to committee and review it as the bill moves along to the Senate. You understand that? You want to comment on it? Okay, well, fine, so that, I would support the motion, but that should be, uh, should go to... Ms. Kowski, you understand that? Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President, I do rise also in support of the motion and the bill, uh, which is in Sacramento. Councilmember Ms. Kowski made most of the argument. This bill was initially introduced in the legislature prior to the March 7th primary, and on March 7th, we saw the passing of Proposition 21. Uh, I believe the council was, uh, the pos... The city's position was, uh, a no on Proposition 21, but it passed, anyway. We look to this bill as maybe some redemption, in addition to the harsh, uh, increasingly harsh judicial measures which were included in Proposition 21. Uh, what this bill would do is not only augment, uh, but also fund a comprehensive infrastructure and network throughout the state of California as it relates to juvenile justice. It is a juvenile justice reform measure, I think it's healthy not only for the state, but certainly for the city of Los Angeles. Public safety is always at the top of our agendas in terms of priorities and concerns. A big segment of public safety today and in the future of the city of Los Angeles is how we treat our kids, how we treat minors. This bill in Sacramento speaks not only to the punishment in terms of how we're addressing the, the problem, but also to prevention and intervention and diversion measures, uh, is the council to support, and would hope that we can move forward as expeditiously as possible to get the city of Los Angeles on record in the state legislature.
Mr. Fuhr.
I move the question.
Previous question has been moved, we have two more people who wish to speak, one of whom has already spoken, so let's, uh... You're okay? All right, let's have a vote on the previous question. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. That is approved.
Nine ayes, one no.
Nope, I guess it's not approved. One, one vote makes the difference, he's entitled to speak twice. You want to speak again? Mr. Holden?
Yeah, Mr. Padilla, have you read the bill?
Did you have a specific question on the bill?
Have you read it?
Yes, I have.
Okay, that's important. I have not read the bill, and that's why I'm saying, let's vote and support the intent, this is legislative intent, fine, of the bill, but I have to read the bill, and that's why I want to refer that part of it to committee, and that's... I tell you, it's important to do that. On the surface, it sounds very good, but it may be something in that bill, Mr. Mike Kosh, you know what I mean by that, you want to come to the table and explain what I'm talking about? Because very often, there's some language in the bill that you don't like unless you studied it, the, the bill. And, Mr. Kosh, you want to explain what I'm saying?
There could be amendments in the bill that would affect, uh, different sections of state law in a different way, which read together can give you a slightly different picture of what's going on.
Very, very true, very true. And so, and there could be amendments along the way, so what we supported today may not, it may not appear to be the same bill later on, so that's what we want to do. And as, as it's amended along the way, Mr. Kosh will bring that information back to us, but we've got to look at the legislation that's been, that's presented before the Assembly and the Senate.
All right, the item is now before us with, uh, the understanding that any subsequent amendments will be reported back to the committee.
This will also go to committee.
It can also go to committee... No, no, the, the motion is that I...
It's supported, I amended it, so it goes, it goes, we vote for it, yes.
We're voting for it, so, which puts the city on record in support with the understanding that if they muck around with it up there, we want to see the amendments. And we will... No, Mr. Deaton.
The motion is to, to adopt a support position on 1913, and at the same time, refer AB-1913 to committee for review and watch.
Fair enough, thank you for the clarification. Everybody got that now? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, next item.
Item number sixty-two, member of the public wishes to be heard on this matter?
Item sixty-two, Mr. Shapiro.
Madam President and council members, item sixty-two is an item that I'm back 100%. The city of LA is, is grappling with the worst police department scandal, and you moved that the DA come here. I'd like to know, when he comes here, I'd like to be allowed to ask him a few questions, because, I know you can't do it, but I know the DA is as responsible as anybody else for what's happening in the Rampart Division. He ignored warnings that should have raised red flags with him when Michael Kraut in 1997, three years ago, reported on two separate occasions that Rafael Perez was lying and was perjuring himself. That should have raised the red flag with the DA's office. When, when, uh, George Rosenstein worked on this case for two months, and is considered one of the better prosecutors they have in the office, and all of a sudden, after two months, when he's ready to present his case against Brian Hewitt and two others, all of a sudden, boom, he's transferred off the case and into Long Beach. Yes, the DA has got a lot of questions to answer. A DA is, is supposed to be part, an integral part of the judicial system. Uh, I, I think...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shapiro.
If it comes up that any judge is responsible as the district attorney is, then he should be called in here, too.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shapiro, we appreciate hearing from you.
Thank you for interrupting me, member, give me a few minutes, but I might...
I gave you a few minutes. I'd like to get to a vote.
Very few minutes, I, give me John back again, at least he isn't quite so tough.
It would be my pleasure. All right, uh... Let the record reflect. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. Uh, this motion was introduced in the interest of having the public, as well as ourselves, obviously, become aware of what specifically the district attorney, um, is prepared to indicate to us about, uh, the, uh, work of his office in the Rampart investigation. Uh, the good news is, he has shared with, uh, both the Chair of Public Safety and myself that he would be more than willing to come to, uh, the, uh, city council as a special order of the day, if deemed appropriate, Madam, um, President, to give his report. That is essentially what this motion seeks to accomplish in the interest of airing, uh, matters that it would seem to me that the public is entitled to know, short of, obviously, jeopardizing an investigation, be it civil or criminal. With that, um, Madam President, I simply rise to ask all members to support this effort, because it seems to me, if we want to restore credibility, it has to be on the basis of accountability, having been well articulated and perceived by the public at large. Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
I didn't think you asked for whether or not we're going to hear this, takes ten votes.
It's on the agenda.
I knows. It's Rule 16.
Well, Mr. Holden, you know, what do you want to do?
I'm going to vote no.
All right.
So you can't hear it?
Thanks, we appreciate that. We'll open the roll, then on whether to, uh, whether to hear this item. Mr. Holden will vote no, and, uh, open the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
And, uh, Mr. Holden is quite correct, the item is not before us, Mr. Holden has, uh, once again shown that one vote can make a difference in the, um, public's right to hear from the, uh, people responsible for law enforcement, and the item will be continued until tomorrow. We will get to do it all over again. You want to offer him redemption again? Go ahead. No. The matter's not before us.
May I simply say, Madam, um, President, that even redemption can be exhausted? And, um...
We're all exhausted, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Yes, and now, now we have to appeal to grace.
She wants to speak during public comment.
Yes, um, an amazing grace, no less. Oh, Gracie Gray is here, thank you so much. What is your pleasure, Madam President? Uh, Mr. Holden, do you intend for us to hear this today, or is the majority of one going to prevail?
If it's not heard today, then it goes over for...
Tomorrow.
It has to go to committee. No, it doesn't go tomorrow. It does go to tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
All right, then, okay, then here today, I'll vote no on it, but here today.
All right.
So, you're, you're voting yes on whether to hear it, just so we're clear about this, I don't want to misrepresent you.
Then I'll vote no against it.
That's fine, you can do that, all right. So, now the matter is before us, and Mr. Shapiro's comments become appropriately a part of the record, and so do Mr. Ridley Thomas's.
Thank you.
And the matter is now before us, whether to invite the district attorney to come and appear before us, and now Mr. Holden wants to speak again.
I want to speak, I didn't speak yet.
Oh, I, pardon me, I couldn't tell the difference, go ahead.
All right, I, uh, think that, I don't think it's going to do us, do the community a service by having the DA come over and make a public statement where he may be saying something for or against the police department, the type of investigation, pointing fingers at who may or may not be to blame, and then you bring the police department in, and the, and the, and the police commission in, they'll say, "Well, no, uh, we are not at fault, they're at fault." I think the thing is, is moving along quite smoothly now, we should leave it at rest. I, I have no knowledge whether or not the district attorney is reporting to the Board of Supervisors in a public setting. I don't know that to be the case, have, has he?
Uh, he plans to do so.
I know, but let him do that first, I think...
He plans to do that first.
Yeah, let him first, uh, I don't think that we should, uh, encourage him or induce him, uh, to come here at all. Uh, I don't think the chief has gone before the Board of Supervisors to give a report. Uh, there's been some discussion about his being invited for that purpose. I think this motion would only, uh, cause, uh, more, uh, finger pointing, and that's not what this community need at this time, and more headlines is not what the community needs at this time as it, as it relates to Rampart. I think we need to put that divisiveness at rest, let the district attorney gather the evidence that's been submitted by the police department and other sources, and then let him proceed to prosecute accordingly. Let the police department do their job, and the police commission do their job, and not make it a political circus. I, that's the way I, I view it, and, and, uh, I'm sorry that it's, it's before us, we have to think about the consequences of our action once again, and our action will be viewed as more publicity, more publicity, more publicity, and to be adverse. You'll get a different story each time as to what happened at Rampart by the police officers. So, I've heard enough about it, I think the community's heard enough about it, let it go to trial, and let it be at rest, and for that reason, I'm voting no.
Ms. Msakowski.
Thank you, Madam President, I rise in support of the motion, I think we have heard from the chief, uh, in this, uh, auditorium, we have heard from the commission president and commission members, I think the DA is an integral part of what is going on, and his presentation to the council is appropriate. I would like to point out that the motion, which says the next available council meeting should be at the request of the President of the Council in extending the invitation and setting it for that next available date that is convenient to both the council agenda and, uh, the DA, and consistent with Mr. Holden's suggestion or, um, acknowledgement that the DA first should make his presentation to the Board of Supervisors, which I understand is scheduled for early April, so after that, I think a presentation to the council would make sense, and that's what I was, uh, I think the next available date means.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, the issue of credibility is on the line, and there's only one real way to cause the public to have a higher sense of confidence in what we are doing and how we are doing it, and that is to report to them forthrightly. The district attorney has indicated to me that he will, in fact, uh, first make his presentation to the County Board of Supervisors. After that has been done, he will make it his business to report to us. Let me just make one distinction of consequence. The last time I checked, it is this body, this city, uh, that bears responsibility in terms of the liability surrounding Rampart. And to the extent that that is the case, we ought to do all that we can to make clear what our position is, and afford those who are part and parcel of the criminal justice system to come before us, answer our questions, and cause the public to have appreciation for what is going on or what is not going on, as the case may be. I thank you, Madam President.
I believe the matter is now before us, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
I believe that's approved. Mr. Holden, is that approved? Just checking. Next item.
Item number sixty-six, ten votes required for consideration.
Thank you. Yeah, there we are, Mr. Holden can prolong the meeting one more time, ten votes for consideration, um, open the roll on whether to consider item sixty-six. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That seems to have been approved. Does anybody wish to be heard on item sixty-six? There's, oh, yes, so there is, you're quite right, there is a card, excuse me, Mr. Shapiro.
I'd like to talk about the legal shenanigans that Holden is pulling, and he's wrong, he's dead wrong.
But that's not the item that's, uh, on the agenda.
On item sixty-six, you're requesting a grant for $1.2 million so that the city can recycle its oil, oil, and I think that's a good idea, I back that. You shouldn't make that request, and you should do all that you can to recycle oil and everything as far as that's concerned. And I'd just like to throw this in, just for one, one good measure, that it's time that somebody really said, "Let's get together and allow the apartment dwellers and condominium dwellers to recycle all the recyclables," that's cans and, and, um, plastics and paper, something's got to be done, and fast.
Thank you, that closes the public hearing on item sixty-six, Mr. Hernandez. All right. Music to my ears. All right, the item appears to be before us, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That seems to have been approved. All right.
Not on the agenda, Special One, findings need to be made by the city attorney.
I think we did Special One, but Special Two. All right, with respect to Special Two, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since last week, there's been an exacerbation, exacerbation, I knew I shouldn't have written that word, of the conditions at the South Los Angeles Animal Shelter, there, um, the severity of the problem requires immediate action, the general manager has called CD8 and discussed the problem, and therefore, the council needs to make the finding that the needs to act rose after the posting of the agenda, and that there is an immediate need to act.
All right, Mr. Wax, did you want to be heard on the findings, or after the findings?
After.
All right. We'll open the roll on the findings of urgency and the need to act. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
The matter is now before us, Mr. Wax.
I'll let Mr. Ridley Thomas speak first, because it's his motion, then I'd like to speak.
Madam President, members of the council, uh, let me just simply say that, uh, there is little more going on in this city that I have found, uh, as deplorable, if it were not for the serious crisis that engulfs the city regarding Rampart, I dare say, the conditions at the animal shelters throughout our city, uh, would occupy center stage in the life of this body and the city at large. Today alone, when going to the shelter in South Los Angeles, uh, the conditions there were just simply startling, horrific, uh, to be, uh, specific, and the conditions under which employees have to work, uh, the conditions under which persons who are coming to, uh, in an attempt to adopt animals, uh, the conditions under which the animals have to, uh, exist, as has been detailed in the motion and otherwise, um, they're not only intolerable, but they are simply deplorable. I, uh, ask you, then, to view this for what it is, an emergency. There's concern about, uh, a particular clause here as it relates to, uh, redeployment, uh, the concerns raised in that, uh, connection are valid. The critical thing to know is that all of these shelters are operating at approximately 180% of capacity. And it's more egregious in the shelter in South Los Angeles, six shelters for all these animals in entirety of the city. I maintain this is a matter of public safety, a matter of public health, and to the extent such is the case, you have several actions before you, I ask for your consideration and support of the same with respect to deployment. If it means, then, uh, that, uh, we strike the matter of deployment in terms of mitigating the conditions and to go into an aggressive, um, hiring, uh, mode, uh, for not only the South Los Angeles shelter, but the other shelters, um, I would, uh, be inclined to move. only the South Los Angeles shelter, but the other shelters, I would be inclined to move. But there is no denying the fact that the animals are at risk killing each other and the like. But beyond that, you have city employees as well who have been attacked by dogs and one recently hospitalized. We cannot allow these conditions to exist. And Madam President, if anyone wants to have further clarification, Mr. Dan Knapp, who is the general manager for Animal Services, is here to answer any such questions. I thank you.
Okay. Mr. Wax.
Yes, Madam President, I voted to bring this matter in on an emergency basis because it is an emergency. And the conditions are as shocking and as deplorable as Mr. Ridley-Thomas has so well presented. I do, however, want to make an amendment because the conditions are horrible in all of the shelters around this city. And the motion that says that we should solve the problem in one by redeploying the personnel from the others does not solve the problem. It exacerbates it even more in the others. I think that this is of an urgent enough and serious enough nature that instead of the paragraph that says redeploy from one to the other, we should instead substitute that, a paragraph that asks the department to begin hiring on an emergency basis, a, at least an initial number of additional employees to be deployed in all of the shelters to take care of this problem. It is an emergency. I think that it demands that response. The worst way in the world, however, would be to pit one against another because all of it needs the equal attention. I know from the East Valley Shelter, from my own experience, I'm sure each of us could stand up and equally testify to the conditions in the other shelters. They have ironically been exacerbated by a very well-intended piece of state legislation.
That's right.
That requires a longer holding period, a piece of legislation that was adopted for very humane purposes. But I think back to the old days when the state let out a lot of people from the mental institutions and then let them out on the street without ever providing any services to back it up. We need to back up this new longer holding period by having more humane facilities. And so, I would move that, and this may have to be worked out in committee, I don't know, but I want to expedite this, and consistent with the good intentions of Mr. Ridley-Thomas, I'd like to move that we substitute the paragraph which simply redeploy personnel from one shelter to another, and instead ask the department to take immediate steps to hire at least a basic number of additional personnel to be deployed at all of the shelters to meet this crisis, and to report back with us within the next couple of days as to exactly how they tend to proceed. But I think that is the better and the more humane and the fairest way to do it, and to do it citywide in the benefit of all the people in all the city.
I would second that, Madam President.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, I'd like Mr. Knapp to come up because, quite frankly, when I first met Mr. Knapp, he talked to me about SB 1785. And I think that he talked to all of us in terms of the urgency and the realities the city was going to be facing. Many times, we don't understand how it is that the state of California, or in some cases, federal government can basically create an unfunded mandate. And here's a classic situation where they're requiring us to basically provide longer care for animals, knowing that we didn't have the facilities to do that. Now, I kinda wanted him to make this presentation as a pre-budget presentation, because we also understood this when we were dealing with last year's budget. And the reality was, in some instances, board members objected to the fact that they weren't able to ask for additional funding as part of a budget. And I'd like Mr. Knapp to give us a state of the department in regards to this legislation, and a clear picture, because it's not just in the South Central Animal Shelter, it's a citywide problem. And there is an urgency, but we needed to take action last year, budget deliberations, and we didn't, because it wasn't an issue that came before us. But we knew it was there. And now, we're gonna have to take action again. And I just want Mr. Knapp to basically give us a state that you're in, in regards to this legislation, and the realities that we're all facing, and what's it gonna take to solve it.
Thank you, council member. As you know, this problem has been growing over the last twenty years, is exacerbated by not having adequate facilities. Our last facility was built in 1988, and that was our north-central facility. In 1987, the CAO, in a management audit of the department, asked the department to do a facility study. And so, it was anticipated in eighty-seven, that was pre-my tenure, so I don't know why it was completed, but I think it shows that we've been behind the eight ball. Since 1992, the dog population in LA has grown by 22%. So, this is a problem that we had to begin with. Because of LA's problem, as you note, Senator Hayden introduced 1785. It was directed at LA to clean up LA's shelters. As you've noted, it's exacerbated a problem we have right now. We are doing a master facility study, the funding was approved by the council. We will be bringing that report back to you in May for consideration of a bond measure in November of 2000 for new facilities. That will give you a solid overview of the shape of the shelters and what exactly is needed. It's empirical data that supports what we've all been sharing anecdotally. And that is, again, we're 180% overcapacity, we are understaffed, seriously understaffed, and those are something, those problems will need to be corrected over a series of years, simply because we can't absorb the fix-it immediately. Specifically to your question, council member, 1785 has exacerbated in all of our shelters by increasing the holding period. For us, slightly by one day, we're holding animals from five to seven days. But where it's really hurt us is in requiring owned animals turned in by their owners to be held for two business days excluding the day they came in. So, that's three to five days, depending upon the day they're admitted. This has seriously exacerbated the problem. The other element of 1785 is requiring that animals during their hold period can only be euthanized for irremedial suffering or serious injury. Now, irremedial is a legal term, it's not a medical term. And our veterinarians, who have been very, very cautious throughout the state, have said that what that means is if a medical condition can be remediated, then the animal must be held during the full hold period. So consequently, previous to 1785, if we had an animal that came in that was severely suffering, it could be remediated with hundreds of dollars of vet bills or whatever it would take. We could still euthanize because it was seriously suffering. For example, sarcopic mange, where the animal's skin is cracking and it's bleeding, the animal could be euthanized. Now, under 1785, it cannot be. Unless our veterinarian can actually share that, yes, we believe that this animal is irremedially suffering, it can't be euthanized. So, we've had 130% increase in medical treatments. We have to hold those animals for that particular amount of time. So, it has seriously exacerbated the problem. For the first six months of this year, we've been watching the statistics very, very carefully, and the statistics have not given a snapshot of the exacerbation until the last month. And that's because puppy breeding season has started and cat breeding season has started. And we're starting to see the seasonal events that normally are seen in shelters. The answer to 1785 is a balance between alleviating the two problems I've mentioned while also cautiously not letting the pendulum swing so far that it gives cart launch to shelters just to euthanize any animal during the stray hole period.
Are you finished, Mr. Hernandez?
You didn't answer my question. Do you need any more workers at these shelters? Is there safety and danger, as Mr. Ridley-Thomas's motion is talking about? Should we be taking action in an emergency sense?
Yes, we should be taking action in an emergency sense. We do need more staff at our shelters. We have approximately seven animal care technicians per shelter. We only have one person on swing shift, one person on graveyard. It's very, very dangerous.
That's not acceptable.
Mrs. Chick.
I don't know. I remember during the budget process, we wanted to give you more resources. And you told us you couldn't take them, you couldn't handle hiring that fast. Because I would assume, since we knew about the state legislation, there were requests for reports to come in from your department to Public Safety Committee some time back, when I was on that committee, to talk about the ramifications to the city from that state legislation. Then I think we could also have anticipated by adding, by your accepting the added resources you did accept, that we were going to be out there in the community being more successful in picking up stray dogs and cats and bringing them into the shelter. So, with just a little bit of forethought, this all could have been anticipated. Then you had a council ready to fight to give you more resources because we're aware, before you arrived on the scene as general manager, that this department, while the pet population, abandoned pet population, has been growing by leaps and bounds, the department's resources have not. So, I'd like you to explain to us why, I guess nine months ago, or a little bit longer, you told us you couldn't take any more resources. And I seem to remember you also said, "If the hiring did go more smoothly, you'd get back to us to let us know that you could, you could still use more resources." I don't know if that would have happened without my colleague's motion. So, I'd like you to explain why, no, please don't give me more, and now today, emergency, please give me more.
Thank you, council member. This department has been dysfunctional, anemic, for many, many years. And I think you've seen that in our inability to implement council policies in reference to microchipping and others. We've not been able to fulfill our function because we've been so anemic. When I presented my budget to my boss, the mayor, last year, his staff had a global view of the state of the city, and of course, our budget had to fit into that. I presented fully what I felt our needs were for the first year. And council was very supportive for desiring to add more staff, but I very realistically had to balance, can we absorb that being dysfunctional as we are? Can we bring that number of staff on? Can we train them? Can we really outfit them the way they're needed so that they'd be effective? I did not want a situation where we brought on so many staff so fast that we ended up with some serious disciplinary matters and/or inefficiencies that would cripple the department further. So, my response to your wonderful offer, of which I said, "Yes, we desperately need," and kept you educated, was not, "I can't absorb it." And I know I got frowned because of that. My response was, "It would be very, very challenging." Wanting their full staff, but having to be very realistic as a manager, could I manage a 26% increase? I had to opt for, "Let's take a big bite and handle it well, rather than cripple ourselves than to take everything we need." Now, very quickly, if I took everything that I needed, what would I have received? We need probably eighty animal care technicians, we have fifty-one. We need probably up to a hundred or more animal control officers, we have sixty-two. We have close to an adequate number of veterinary staff that the mayor and the council provided. To absorb that increase all in one year would have been crippling. And so, I think good management on my part is to come back, and which I did, to my boss, the mayor, and to you during budget time, and say, "Yes, this is our need, I've kept you educated, that this is our continuing need, and let's phase this out over a period of years so that we can't absorb it and do it properly."
Doesn't seem like we're doing so well right now.
Okay. Ms. Goldberg.
How many vacant positions do you have?
We have, I believe, approximately eight vacancies at this time.
Are any of them in the, in the shelter employees that we're looking at?
Yes, we have four or five in the animal care.
Are you having trouble filling them?
Technicians. No, we're not.
So, they haven't been filled because...
They're, we're in the process of filling them. By year end, we anticipate that we're only going to have three openings left in all of the staff that we need to hire, including vacancies.
Yeah, but see, if you've, if you've got vacancies now, I'm just trying to address, we were gonna give you more positions. If you can't fill the ones you've got, I don't know what good it does to give you more positions. So, I'm trying to find out how to help you, but to make sure that the resources actually get expended. So, is there, was there no list? I mean, what, what...
There is a list, it's a matter of interviewing and getting their medical checks and everything else. I think to directly respond to what you're looking for, council member, that is, several weeks ago, when we reviewed this with the mayor's staff, we presented to them the alternative of using salary savings that we do have to bring some as-needed on immediately.
Uh-huh.
We had as-needed at the beginning of the year. We can recall some of those individuals immediately.
Are you planning to do that?
Yes, yes. We've received approval from the mayor's office as well as our commission.
In terms of the short term, because we are gonna start a budget cycle, which will look at the little bit near term anyway, but not the, not the immediate. In terms of the immediate, what number of positions on an as-needed basis could you hire in the next thirty days, and how many do you need?
We believe that we can hire eighteen, that's thirty-six, of course, as you understand, but eighteen full positions in the next thirty or so days, because we can recall some of the ones we had earlier on here if they're still available.
And do you have in your own salary savings enough money to do that eighteen?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do you need more than eighteen but are being held back by the salary savings, being that's all you could afford?
I believe eighteen is minimally what we need right now and what we can hire in time. If we had a larger number, we're not gonna be able to do that.
Do you need thirty-six?
Yes, definitely. We, as I shared.
And, and if you had the money for thirty-six, how much more money would we be talking about from now until June 30th on an as-needed basis?
I'd have to get back to you with a specific amount, but I will estimate that we're looking at over $300,000.
Over $300,000. See, folks, I think that if we're talking about short term and then long term, we're talking about him being able to do something dramatic in the short term that really changes the conditions. Just hiring the eighteen, in my humble opinion, won't change the conditions. It gets us back to the kind of zero in a zero-sum game. We need to get to the positive side, or it's gonna look like it looks now, only, and it's only for three months. I think that it's probably impossible to do this all here, but I do believe that we need to be, very quick, and thirty days, in my humble opinion, is too long. I think we need to have a look from Public Safety and maybe the Budget and Finance to have a joint meeting, this is my recommendation, in the next week, a special meeting on just this issue, and bring back directly to council what would be the short-term measures between now and June 30th that would actually have an impact on the problem that's out there. And that gives us, then, an opportunity to decide how much to carry over into the next budget or not, but I don't think we can wait thirty days, I really don't. I just went through some very harrowing times out there myself personally.
Wait, but, all right. Say your motion again, because you're over your time.
My motion is to substitute for the various therfor's on this motion, that we direct the Public Safety and Budget and Finance Committees to hold a hearing within the next week, a special meeting with the department, to discuss how to, what are the immediate needs between now and the end of this particular fiscal year, and to come back to council with a recommendation on those items that can be done quickly and at which we could implement quickly.
Okay.
Okay? To be voted upon. That's my motion.
Ms. Muzikowski. Do I, while, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we heard a second. Ms. Muzikowski, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I was going to indicate that next Monday, we have a Public Safety Committee meeting, and we'll bring this matter in, so it can be handled. Ms. Goldberg, we will bring this in next Monday in Public Safety. Public Budget and Finance meets on Wednesday. We can either do it jointly or refer it Monday and Wednesday, but by next week, have, have both committees hear it. And I do think you're right, that this is not a thirty-day matter. This is a look at the emergency situation and see what can be done, and also its effects in the long run, looking at what was requested in the budget, and then we will be discussing very surely what is in the budget, but getting a jumpstart on it now. The only thing I would like to say, I think, and Mr. Knapp has alluded this, to this to a degree, we also, in the council, in last year's budget, authorized a number of additional animal control officers. And yet, just that ability to hire, to train, and the vacancies, we haven't yet been able to fully implement all of the animal control officers who are going out and picking up the strays and bringing them in. We're not yet at full complement that the council did authorize, just in the ability to get the list, to certify the list, and then to do the training. I think we are making some headway on that. We'll have a class coming out of training next month. But what we are seeing, and I think what this motion addresses, is, is a full press towards all the issues, the issues of faci- issues of facilities. One, you're having the report come. We will look at a bond. But in the meantime, we need to do something immediately if the shelter identified in this motion. Secondly, we need to deal with the employee issue, employee across the board, in the shelters and out picking up the strays. We've authorized them on one hand. I think we're going to be looking at a significant augmenting of that budget this time. And thirdly, and we can't let that go unnoticed, is the state legislation. That has clearly compounded our problems significantly. And we need to look at it and get some relief, or we need to get some state money. It's, we've said again and again, that when the state comes in and mandates cities, local government, to do certain things and doesn't follow up with the money to deal with the impacts and effects, we are now dealing with it. And that's, that's unfortunate, but we've got to make a better case for the corollary between state legislation and the need to fund it at the state level if it's going to be a mandate on local government. But we will deal with it Monday in Public Safety Committee. And if we can make it jointly with Budget and Finance, we'll do it within a day or two after that.
Mr. Fuhr.
Actually, Ms. Goldberg's comments are precisely where I wanted to go with this. I will say that we'll do it on Wednesday in budget, after having the policy committee hear it on Monday. Madam City Attorney, have, have we pursued reimbursement from the state?
I can't answer that. I really don't know whether we have or not.
Let us amend today's action in addition to the committee thing, to have the city attorney take whatever steps are necessary to pursue state reimbursement. And then report to the Budget and Finance Committee on Wednesday about the capacity of the city to do that.
Amendment to program.
Okay. Mr. Holden.
Mr. Fuhr is correct. It's a mandated program to station reimburse. Mr. Knapp, when you first came here, you were sounding really good. And then you said, you sounded even better to some people, certainly the mayor's office, when you said you didn't need any more money. You didn't need any more staff. And Ms. Chick, recall the discussion that you said, I don't need any more I can manage. New broom sweeps clean, sweeps clean. But now, you said you went to the mayor's office a few, short time ago, and he authorized you to use the surplus money in your budget to bring back temporary employees. Why haven't you done that? I mean, you, how many have you hired? Any?
Thank you, Councilmember Holden. I have never said to council that we didn't need any more staff. I've kept you all very educated. When I first came, I made the announcement.
Not you, not you, not you.
Two weeks ago, two weeks ago, I went to the mayor's office, briefed them fully, as I did your offices, and received the initial approval. The commission is the head of the department.
No, wait a minute.
We shared this on Monday.
Please, on my time now. That's enough, Mr. Knapp. That's enough. The fact of the matter is that, in my view, you didn't do your job. In my view, you could have hired more people and you didn't. In my, you have eight positions that's open, and they're not filled, and yet you have a list. A crisis has been generated, for whatever reason, created at, at the animal shelter in my district. When did I hear about it? The other day, when you talked about spay and neutering problems. That's the only time I heard about it. When you came to me over there and you said, I want you to vote for this. You didn't share that information with the councilman of the district. Today, you had a news conference, and I applaud Mr. Thomas for doing that. To talk about the problem, you didn't say, oh, Mr. Holden, this is going on in your district? This is the problem that we need to fix? I don't know why you're bringing it to our attention now. You have the authority to hire more people. Let me ask you another question. How many shelters are, under your jurisdiction in the city?
Six.
Six. Do they have the same problem the other shelters?
Not as severe as House Senate.
Not as severe. Then why don't you just take some of those animals from the overcrowded shelter in, in my district and take them to the other shelters? You have the authority to do that.
We are when we can.
Pardon?
We are when we can.
You can do it any day.
There are serious repercussions, and so we're doing it as we can.
Oh, you see, now, I don't know what you're trying to prove here with all this, because you have the authority to do that, and you're not doing it. Therefore, your judgment is going to be in question. Why are you doing what you're doing when you could fix the problem? You have the authority, the ability, to fix the problem right now, and you're not doing that. Why are you creating the crisis? I don't get it.
Mrs. Chick. Yes, you can. I'd like to move the previous question on the entire matter.
Bless you. Previous question is before us. Open the roll on previous question, close the roll, tabulate the vote. That's approved.
Ten ayes.
All right. Now, the item is before us, and Mr. Ridley Thomas will explain how it got amended in the process of this.
Thank you, Madam President. The amendments are as follows. Mr. Wax suggests that we treat the issue of hiring rather than, on an emergency basis, rather than redeployment that is shifting employees from one.
Right. So we changed paragraph?
Right.
Three or whatever it was.
Ms. Goldberg moves.
And you've accepted that amendment?
I do, as a friendly amendment. Ms. Goldberg moves that we take that matter to Budget and Finance and Public Safety for the purpose of allocating whatever resources and stipulating what number of persons should be hired. Now, that takes care of the personnel matters. And the balance of this remains as is with respect to shelters. They go to Public Safety. And I would simply say, Madam President, we should continue the matter to next Friday, that is, a week from this Friday, after Budget and Finance and Public Safety.
So you want to continue the whole thing, then?
Yes, it will be continued in lieu of the meetings that will, and it will come back on Friday after next.
All right. So Mr. Ridley Thomas is now suggesting, in keeping with all the incorporated friendly amendments, that we're going to continue this item for?
For a week from Friday.
A week from Friday, yes.
And those, and the joint committees and so forth will have met.
Will have met in between.
Right.
Okay? Okay, Mr. Knapp, can you live with that? You're going to have to. All right. Without objection, that will be the order. And that brings us, I believe, to the end of the agenda.
Now it's time for public comment and non-agenda items.
We have a number of people who want to be heard in public comment, starting with Mr. Shapiro.
Can I just make an announcement?
Yes, please.
The Planning and Land Use Management Committee will meet five minutes after council adjourns.
If it ever adjourns. Mr. Shapiro.
Madam President and council members, it is my intention to call it a day as a community watchdog, to retire barring any type of catastrophe. And I, after 18 years of trying to show the public that they have rights before local bodies, like the council and the Board of Supervisors, and?
No, he's, it's his time, Mr. Holden.
Mr. Fuhr broke the quorum, so the quorum, so you can't help.
Well, all right, you can leave if you want to. I'm going to stay and listen to Mr. Shapiro.
Oh, okay. Mr. Mr. Holden, like I said, I'm decided to call it a day. There's only so much you can, you can take on this. I tried to do what I could. I tried to bring important items to the attention of the council and to the public. There are numerous items that I brought up that have been adopted by the council, notably to get TV for the, for the council. I'm sorry, Mr. Holden, that you, you had to take this opportunity to leave, because you should stay and listen to some of this. The term limits that Richard Riden put on there is one of the bitter items that came before this council, and I did what I could to support it. I tried to do what I could to hold district meetings. And in 1998, you held 10 district meetings. You showed the general public what you were about. The average attendance was 4500. I tried to get the open door of all elected officials to all members of the public one day in the month. Haven't been successful in that, but I, but I'm trying. The, the, the point of all the other items is that it is, it, it, the public can see on the TV here. They can see the harassments. They can see the slights. They can see the actual insults that the public has to assume when it appears before these legislative bodies. But that's the way it goes. That's the way you become a gadfly. That's the way you become tough. The people should understand what's happening. But as I, as I said, I hope everybody understands that you won't have Leonard Shapiro to kick around anymore, as Richard Nixon once said, and that it's my intention not to come back here unless the worst emergency in the world comes out. I hope that you do what you can. And I hope that you can get along without reading my column in the Tolucon Times and the Watts Times. But I say, enough is enough. After 18 years, I've decided to call it a day. So long.
All right. Well, let's give the other people a chance to be heard first. Lee Marks Hamst is next.
Hi, I'm Lee Marks, and I'm here because I'm looking for justice and help. I was here February 2nd, asking for help. I was assured I would get it, and I'm still here for the same help. And please tell me, after the meeting is over, where could I possibly go for help and for justice? And the, the problem is, my complaint is with the Department of Public Works, where they maliciously, blatantly, with the arrogance of ignorance, make their own laws, which they have no right to make their own laws. And this is what I'm addressing now. What can I do about the fact that the Department of Public Works illegally makes their own laws, just to, to protect themselves and to their own, to their own values, which is no values at all? Please help me. Thank you. Goodbye.
Gracie Gray is next, and then Nico and Theo Milonopoulos. I do want to inform you that we seem to have lost a quorum, so you're no longer officially addressing the council. But the cameras are still on, and most of us are still here.
Good afternoon, City Councilwomen and City Councilmen. As for Nate Holden, he wasn't doing anything anyway. So he should have been left, he should have left years ago. I'm here because, first of all, I do not live in his district. For years, my family and I have been persecuted for living in his district. When we was in his district, he did nothing. When we left, he still did nothing.
Mrs. Gray, we, we really, if you wanted to talk to us about a matter before the council, we're very glad to hear you, but you're not interested in hearing attacks on individuals.
Okay. First of all, I would like to read Luke, Chapter 8, verse 16. "This is through God, and with Jesus Christ he was speaking it. No one after lighting a lamp covered it with a vassal or put it underneath a bed, but he put on a lampstand, that those stepping out, stepping in may behold the light. For there is nothing hidden that will not become manifest, neither anything concealed that will never become known and never come into open." Now, about the rampart issue. That's from God.
Thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me, ma'am.
Well, I've got, I've got two more people who want to be heard.
Yes, ma'am. On the rampart district, this is my son, Joseph. Joseph never came home. This is the one that they put on the street. This man, on October, defendant was arrested with another individual, taken promptly from Cecil Williams, grave resisted arrest, and was later found in possession of a .357 Magnum revolver. And that's only one time. I want to know why you all keep bringing up the issue about guns when you are supporting a person that has been reported over 10 times or more. I'm not going to, I'm not going to take it. I'm not on city, listen, I don't, the city do not pay my rent. I'm on, I, listen.
You're going to have to finish up now, because I want to let these other two gentlemen speak.
Yes, I'm, I'm.
Sergeant, I think you'll have to ask Mrs. Gray to leave.
Well, why don't you guys?
I, I'd like to let these other two people who want to be heard be heard. I think they may have something to say about guns. We've already heard from you. Your time is up.
You're up?
Yes, your time is up. Nico, Nico and Theo Milonopoulos are up next. We'll be back. Gentlemen, go ahead.
I'm Nico Milonopoulos, and I live in Los Angeles.
I'm Theo Milonopoulos, and I live in Los Angeles. We are 13 years old and co-founders of KidsWise LA. More than seven months ago, a motion was made by Councilmember Hernandez to ban the sale of gun ammunition in the city of Los Angeles. Since that motion was made, at least 14 kids in Los Angeles have been shot, nine of whom have been shot to death. We know that animal shelters are important, and rampart is important, but, but so are kids. We know that many of you support the motion. The ban has also been supported by the Police Commission and the police chief since last December. We know that a ban is legal, because the city has banned the sale of gun ammunition during the holiday periods for the past decade. We don't believe the excuse that it is not legally possible, since we all know that gun ammunition has never been legislated in the state of California, and therefore, the state does not fully occupy the field.
We are LA's children. We are being killed in all neighborhoods, from the inner city to the suburbs. We are black, white, Hispanic, and Jews. We are your children, your grandchildren, and your neighbors. On behalf of the children of Los Angeles, we beg you, the adults, to help kids from being shot. We cannot wait any longer.
The ongoing and wasteful killing of children in Los Angeles must stop now. We ask the Public Safety Committee to please stop delaying the vote on this issue. It's time for you to stand up for the children of LA. Our safety is in your hands.
Thank you. That closes the public comment period. And in view of the fact that we've lost a quorum, it closes the council meeting as well. So we are adjourned. We'll see you all on tomorrow.